Good evening and welcome to the sixth meeting of fiscal year 2025 for the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order. And begin by introducing members of the planning board and the staff.
Cheryl Taggias member.
Maggie Oldfield member.
Jim Davis member.
And Meredith Hall serving as chair. Sean Fahy unfortunately is not able to be here with us this evening. But with us on Zoom, we have our staff, Tim.
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Cheyenne.
Cheyenne Fraser, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development.
And with us in person, Julia.
Julia, you have your work.
And a big shout out to Julia for doing the Ice Bucket Challenge for the ALS Foundation at the Forbes House Museum. So just good job on that. Very good. And first item, second item is our administrative items, the approval of our minutes. And there's two sets of minutes if members had a chance to look. And those would be August 6th and July 25th. Has everyone had a chance to review? I just had one item which is not anything significant. Let me just see if I can find it.
Which set?
It was, that's what I just wanted to double check. It was about the legislature CPA, I mean, sorry, ADU.
That's probably the sixth then.
Yeah, that's what I just was looking. And it was where we stated legislature. Oh. Yeah, E O H L C. We didn't want to take them in the house and calculate it. It referred to HL, to the approved by the legislature. An EO HLC. Sorry.
Oh, I see it. Yeah.
Says, and I think it just should end in legislature because the EO HLC does not legislate.
That's it. Right.
Right. So it just would end with that.
Do you see that? It's the second to last sentence.
Are we talking about the 18th or the 6th?
The 6th, under the report to the Director of Planning and Community Development.
That's right.
The very end of the second to last sentence.
Three lines. Yeah. So 180 days after the passage of the legislation, period.
I just did it in our.
And then we can just take out.
One Drive.
Yep.
File, Julia, just so you know, I just did it there. Okay?
Great. Thank you. That was the only item I saw.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the, oh, actually, Jim, were you okay with the change I suggested?
I love you. Thank you very much. Yeah.
All right, then I'll make a motion to approve the July 25th and the August 6th minutes as amended.
Second.
Great. And all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. And then the next item for discussion is our next meeting dates, which is hard to believe. We are then into September. And we have, I believe, the 12th. The 12th and the 26th of September would be our next meeting dates. Okay. And now for, Tim, Director of Planning and Community Development, your update, please.
Thank you, Meredith. A couple, hopefully, quick things. And I just wanted to tee something up in case the board would be interested in putting it on a future agenda. I've been corresponding a little bit with Maggie and some of her neighbors about a, some work that's being done at a property on the corner of Hillside and Harland Street. And it was, it was, it was brought to our attention that there was some work being done on, on stone walls on that corner. And so I talked to the building commissioner about it. We took a trip over there on, on a couple of days during the week to kind of see kind of what was going on. And, and you know, effectively what's happened is, you know, that house on that corner has been doing a lot of renovations and a lot of landscape work. And so all kind of, you know, we've got a whole laundry list of building permits, you know, in there for that house. But none of the, none of the types of permits that usually kind of, you know, flag scenic road issues for us. And so I think what we've got is a property owner that, you know, didn't really, wasn't really aware of the scenic road rules. You know, if you, if you look at, or if you have a recollection of, of, you know, that, that part of Harland Street, you know, the, the stone wall is very low, covered with brush. A lot of that brush has been cleared out. The stone wall had been removed. And they're in the process, they, they, they may already have been done at this point of replacing the stone wall in sort of the same location, you know, where, where it was originally, you know, placed. Now, the scenic road regulations have a, a component that's sort of, I don't want to call it an exception, but you don't need a scenic road permit if you're temporarily removing a stone wall and replacing it in the same location with the same materials. There is a bonding element to that, which obviously, you know, this, this project did not, did not go through. But I, I think ultimately, and so, you know, this is again, is something that the board, you know, will want to discuss, you know, potentially on a future agenda. I don't want to say no harm, no foul. You know, obviously, we want people to follow the rules. The stone wall is there. And the brush has been cleared and, and you know, it's, it's kind of, you know, a situation where if we had been made aware of this, it still wouldn't be a situation where a scenic road permit was required. But it is something that kind of flew under our radar. And, you know, thankfully, you know, we're not dealing with the situation where the stones are gone and we're in a sort of punitive situation. But just a couple of things to kind of put, you know, on, on your plate potentially is, you know, we can get some more information about, you know, what's been going, going on over there. We took some pictures while we were driving by. We can take some sort of after pictures to kind of show you, you know, what's been done over there. And then, you know, if the board decides that, you know, there wants to be some sort of communication or something, or some type of action, obviously, that's, that's your prerogative to do that. You know, the other thing, and this is something, you know, I've been discussing with, with Maggie and with some, some members of the Hillside Neighborhood Association, is just sort of like clarifying the scenic road regulations, trying to identify kind of where some gaps are. I think, you know, in 95 plus percent of cases, it's either a driveway permit or some other type of major site plan approval, special permit. And, you know, we're, we're fully aware of scenic road work. You know, sometimes there are cases like this where, you know, there's either landscape work being done that doesn't require a permit or, you know, someone is just not aware of the regulations and we kind of are dependent on, you know, eagle eyed neighbors to kind of flag things for us. I know last year, we had a, a discussion about, you know, how to, you know, better publicize and educate the public on scenic road regulations. You know, one thing that we're kind of, that, that the Hillside Association is kind of taking upon themselves is, is just sort of internal, you know, to their own list, like, hey, here's the regulations. If you're doing work, you know, here you go. I think we can avail ourselves of, of some of the other neighborhood associations, Brushel, Brushel Association, you know, Milton Hill Association, these are all places with scenic roads. But again, you know, I know there were some ideas that were tossed out last year around kind of further public education. You know, I think we tend to do a pretty, a pretty okay job of, of grabbing these things before there's any kind of major, major damage that's done. But obviously, you know, if someone, you know, is going to take down a wall and they're not aware of the, the regulations or they want to, or they are aware and they just don't care, you know, it's, there, there are instances where, where things can slip through the cracks. And I think education publicity is, you know, is, is key to that. So one thing, just as a means of follow up, and, and, you know, where I can talk to Meredith about, you know, a potential agenda item in the future, you know, we'll send some, you know, during and after photos of the work that's being done. And, and the board can kind of decide, you know, is, is the juice worth the squeeze to kind of, you know, try to kind of get this into the scenic road process. And then secondarily, you know, if there wants to be a conversation around, you know, publicity, public education, et cetera.
That's, that's great, Tim. Yeah, I think that we definitely want to put that back on the agenda. And, you know, one of the items I know we talked about was working, getting an article in the Milton Times to just, you know, put it out there and let people know where there are existing scenic roadways, what, what they are in town, where they're located. As far as, you know, my experience, and I would defer to Cheryl, but even when they want to put back the stone wall, they're taking it down, they're reusing, putting it back. It has typically come before the historical commission and the, and the planning board. And, and really, the reason being is it's on public property. And I think that's where part of the confusion is sometimes people think the stone wall, that's their boundary or, you know, that they don't realize it's, it's not on their property. They think it's part of, their property goes all the way to the road.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the trigger, the trigger for scenic roads is, you know, public right of way. As a practical matter, almost all of these stone walls, you know, straddle the property line. And, you know, I think, you know, tie goes to the town in terms of, you know, whether it's in the right way or not. I think, you know, relative to sort of the temporary removal of a wall, which we don't see that often, but we do see occasionally, the regulations allow you to do that without needing a permit. But, you know, again, there's procedures involved with that to kind of secure the replacement of the wall. So, you know, a, a strict reading of, of the regulations, you know, there was a violation here. But, you know, the practical effect of the violation, you know, is, is the wall is returned to its kind of normal, you know, it's, it's, it's location. And, you know, you can be the judge of whether you think it's good or bad or, or indifferent. And we will send those photos around and you can kind of check it out yourself and see. But, but I think, you know, Meredith, you're right. I think, you know, just knowledge of, of the ins and outs of the regulations, you know, people are doing landscape work. They're not punching a driveway in, they're not doing anything major. You know, it doesn't require any of the permits and, and they just may not be aware that, you know, touching that stone wall kind of has a requirement of, of a permit. So I, I think we'll, we'll get that on the agenda for the next meeting. I'll send you some photos of, of that particular property and you can all, and I do think, and I see Elaine Carroll from the Times is in the audience. Maybe we'll chat with her about maybe getting something in the paper. So we can, we can work on that. A couple, a couple other quick items. Another thing that I will, I didn't want to send it out ahead of the meeting just because you have a lot on your plate right now. But the, the Health Department just completed a project that they've been working on for quite some time, a community health assessment. This is, I don't know if it's the first time we've done one of these, but if, if it's not, it's the first time in a long time of a real kind of deep dive into some of the public health issues that are facing Milton residents. I think the good news is, is that Milton is, is pretty healthy compared to the rest of the state. But obviously, there are public health issues that every town deals with. And, and there are elements of, of kind of public health where, where Milton is, is not doing as well as it can. The reason I bring this up is there are a number of kind of planning, transportation, land use related, you know, determinants of public health that I think the planning board could potentially play a role in, in affecting. And so I will, I will send out that report. I'll also, I'm going to kind of, I haven't finished reading it yet. I'm kind of a little bit, a little bit through. But put together just a really brief memo, kind of highlighting the things that I think are most relevant to the planning board. You know, doesn't necessarily need to have any sort of immediate action. But just to kind of keep in mind, you know, you, you may or may not be aware, you know, public health and kind of landscape architecture are kind of the two foundational, you know, pillars of, of the planning profession. It was all about public health back in the day. And so I think keeping that front of mind is, is really important. So it's a really great report that the Health Department did, Board of Health involved every step of the way. Lot of departments, a lot of focus groups of residents. So it's a really, a really great job that they did. So I'll pass that around. And again, you know, could be fodder for future discussion and kind of decision making for the planning board.
Carolyn Kinsella did send that to the planning board members.
Oh, did that go to all the members? Okay. I didn't, I saw that it went to the department heads, but, um, okay, great. So you've got it. That's awesome.
I would love for you to send out with your highlighted items on that. I, that would be of interest to see that. So feel free to still send it to us again.
For sure. We'll do that.
Great. I do think, Tim, I briefly read through some sections that I thought were most relevant to planning. And I do agree that there's things there that, that we should talk about. And even some things that are identified in certain areas. For example, the area where the Nippon's at Esplanade Initiative is proposed is mentioned in, with respect to Heat Island and with respect to other, other things. So I, I think it's definitely something that we should take a look at carefully.
I remember having a long conversation with the, with the authors about Heat Island Effect. That was my, my little baby. So let's plant some trees over there. And, and one, one other quick thing, just, just to kind of by way of, you know, coming attractions. Julia, Cheyenne and I were kind of poking around town as, as, as we often do, just checking things out. Passed by the Ice House, we happened to run into the construction manager. He invited us in. That project is coming along. It's going to be very, very nice. It's still kind of the inside, they're working on finishes, kind of half of it is kind of, you know, still at the studs level. There's a lot of landscape and, and kind of hardscape work that needs to be done. But that project is coming right along. And, and I said, you know, at some point, once the construction is a little bit further along and you sort of are going to be able to get a feel for what it's going to be, you know, we'd love to be back and, and maybe do a tour, you know, with the planning board and, and other folks who are interested. So, so that's moving along. And I mention that because there's been a lot of interest in that project. You know, everyone knows we have all sorts of approved 40Bs. This is the first one to come out of the ground. And, you know, we've been getting a lot of folks, you know, calling us, you know, how can I get one of these units? When's the lottery? We did just set up a dedicated affordable housing opportunities page on the planning department website. So it's, it's the first link on the left side if you go to the planning department. It's got some kind of permanent links to kind of regional affordable housing resources. These are places that we always send people to, even if there's not opportunities in Milton. There are regional opportunities, Boston Metro List, Housing Navigator. These are resources that we want people to use. We do have a current affordable housing lottery for two units at 71 to 73 Warren Ave, which are associated with the Walcott Woods project. Those are the final two affordable units that Walcott Woods is responsible for. So anyone out there in TV land that's watching, that's interested in an affordable condo in Milton, check out the planning department page. Applications are due in October. You, good to get a head start on that stuff. As we get these lotteries coming online, Ice House will be next, East Milton after that, 7-Eleven Randolph Ave after that. That'll be where kind of we go for that. So it's, uh, it's, it's exciting times. It's going to be a good project. And we'll get you all in there when the time is right. So.
Question, Tim?
Cheyenne, oh, sorry, Cheryl.
Did you happen to ask if they have tenant or tenants for the commercial space? There's a lot of interest in that as well.
Cheryl, if I knew, that would have been the first thing I said. So. They're, they're, they're sort of still, because the construction, the construction is still, there's still a fair amount of work to do on the inside. They haven't really been aggressively kind of looking for, for tenants just yet. The good thing about that space, and, you know, you kind of see what the dynamics are. It is, it's, it's not a huge space. It's, I, I think it's 35 or 32, 50 square feet. It is divided into two spaces. Small space is good for a small operation. You know, if, if, if it was one big space, you're really limited in, in who the tenants could be. So there are two small spaces. If a bigger tenant, you know, wanted to go in, fully capable of kind of taking that dividing wall down and kind of expanding the space. So they are, they are flexible in, in that way. But I did express that there is a ton of interest in, in what the tenant in the commercial space is going to be. If we get an idea that they're ready to share, you know, we'd love to hear from them. So we'll, we'll be keeping an eye on that.
So, Tim, just if I may, on a moment, when, I believe there's going to be some analysis coming in the, beginning in the, in next month on economic development and I think on the business side. One of the things I'd like, just thinking about that space and other spaces, like, there's a lot of disappointment in the type of business that went into 130, or is going into 131 Elliott. There was hope for, you know, more, I think, store or cafe or restaurant, et cetera. One of the challenges I understand is the buildup costs for such a raw space. And I was curious whether there's any funding available, like grant funding that could be made available to businesses that might be, local businesses that might be interested in that space. And you don't have to give me an answer tonight, but.
No, I, 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 I think that, I think it's a great point. And, and, and these are kind of things, because we've had such little commercial development, you know, in town, you know, we're sort of a little bit atrophied in our kind of experience with some of these, you know, mass development, you know, Office of Economic Development at the state level, have all sorts of opportunities, you know, specifically for businesses. You know, these are games that we haven't really been in, you know, again, because of the lack of commercial development. But we do have, you know, some more coming online, you know, relatively soon. So I, I do think that there's stuff out there for that. Well, I'll probably give a buzz to our, our old friend, April Anderson, who is, you know, lives and breathes in this world, can probably point me in the right direction. The, the other thing about, you know, a, a place like 131 Elliott, and I was talking to Cheyenne about this, those are commercial condos, you know, not, not dissimilar to, to the 36 Central units. Those are a little bit smaller commercial units. And, you know, with a commercial condo, it's, it's not just paying your rent, it's, you know, it's just like buying a house. And so I think that, that is a further limiting factor on the type of business, you know, that you can do. It's, it's good to own your space, obviously. But, you know, if, if you're, if, it kind of affects the nimbleness of your business being able to get in. But, you know, that is what it is. We don't have a ton of control over that. But we will be checking out, you know, opportunities for, you know, potential funding for kind of, you know, business development. And, and I think definitely, you know, it may not line up with that planning process, but that's definitely something we'll look for as recommendations from that economic development planning process.
So, Tim, along the same lines, if you could find out whether there are funders who are more apt to lend. I know my business, when we were looking at a commercial condo, they said there's very few comps, you know, it's hard to, for lenders to think that those are something that if a business doesn't, isn't able to pay it, that they're able to do, you know, take it and do something with it. And so it's not like a home mortgage that way, or, you know. So I'm curious if there are lenders who target small business that would, you know, on the, on the commercial condo market. So if, if that's something that we could ask in that process that's starting on economic development, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. For sure.
And I have a question. Do we really, you know, I'm a big advocate for small business, especially local and non-chain. But do we really actually have any say as to what goes into that building? You know, we might want to see certain businesses, but really it comes down to whoever takes a risk. It's a risk to run a business and whoever is willing to take a risk. Can we say to them, oh, sorry, we don't like your business. It's not our first choice? I mean, do we really have a say like that?
In, in that particular, in, in this particular case of, of the Ice House, and I, it's, it's all governed by the comprehensive permit. And so I'll, I'll have to go and, and look and see if there are any stipulations in the comprehensive permit around, you know, what uses are, are kind of allowed or not allowed. Otherwise, it probably defaults to the typical kind of business uses that are in our zoning. And, and as a general kind of matter, that's where, that's where the limits are. You know, especially in the business district where, where business kind of zoning is operative. You know, you say, these are the types of uses that you can have. These are the types of uses you can't have. And if someone checks one of those boxes, there's really not a lot, you know, to, to be said there. But I can, I can double check the comprehensive permit for that Ice House project and see if there were any kind of limits or recommendations or kind of guardrails for, for the type of tenant in there.
So, so, Tim, I know like in places like Boston, they have Main Streets kind of programs where there's kind of funds or other tools, I guess, to encourage small, you know, local business or small business. So to me, like a, a space that's 4,000 square feet or 3,000 square feet is not as likely for a local small business because it's a pretty big chunk to take on. So, you know, in some ways, you know, if we start to think about, again, in the economic development discussions, you know, is there some package that, I think maybe under the ARPA funding, there was some availability of funding that went to some local businesses. If there's anything like that, that we can have, that would help us, you know, attract the local business, that. I know one thing, you know, it's, it has a lot to do with the landlord, you know, creditworthiness of a, of a chain is a lot different than the creditworthiness of a startup, you know, a brand new mom and pop. But if there's ways that, you know, the town, in any way, the town could help with that, I think we'd like to know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely look into all that. And, and again, this is, all of these questions are kind of the reason why we're engaging in an economic development planning process because, you know, we haven't done a ton of thinking about this. We haven't had to. But I think, I think now, you know, is, is a time where it's really appropriate to kind of ask these questions. So that's all going to be part of that, part of that, that process. That's all I've got. Those were quick things and we just spent 20 minutes on them. So I'll, I'll be done.
All right. So now, 7:30, we can now move on to Citizens Speak. And, Tim, if you see any hands up, we'll look here as well. Is anyone seeing any?
No one in the room.
No one in the room. Okay. All right.
I'm not seeing any hands on Zoom.
Okay. All right. So we can go right into our, the new business discussion of the ADU provisions of Affordable Homes Act.
Meredith, we, we've, we've got Zoe Mueller from UTIL with just a really quick MBT Communities update. Can we get her in and out?
Sure. Is that okay with the board members? Yep, let's do that. That sounds good.
All right. I'm going to bring Zoe in and make sure she can share her screen.
Hi, Zoe. Hi there.
Hi there. Welcome.
I thought you did the wrong thing. Now, let me see if I can share. Okay. So we just wanted to share with you a quick update on something we've done in the background in preparation for working with you on any revisions to districts. So this is the method that we have heated up and planned to use for being able to surface to you all what the net new units are for each of the districts that we consider. So this isn't the actual calculations, but we wanted to show, you know, get you aware of how we're planning to do it. So that when the time comes, there's a little bit less to kind of, or get yourself oriented to all at once. So there's kind of a two steps to this process. And I do want to kind of, before getting into the, we've just flagged that this is kind of a, a little bit of an apples to oranges comparison. It's, it's still very useful for our purposes, I think. It's conceptually valuable. But we are kind of comparing one thing, which is about allowable development and the other, which is about what's on the ground. So right now you have existing built units and you have what's allowed to be built. And those things are often different. So your existing zoning probably doesn't allow all of the things that are built currently. But we're going to kind of put that to the side for now. And I just want to kind of walk you through how we're planning to do this, which is comparing, like I said, the existing built units to what the new zoning that we're considering and evaluating together would allow. So what that looks like is starting with the new zoned unit capacity. And this would be coming from the state compliance model calculations. And as kind of a footnote to that, it's important to understand that the state compliance model, because it's built to estimate multifamily unit capacity, which the state defines as three or more units for the purpose of this law. That means when you get multifamily unit capacity. That means when you get multifamily unit capacity from the model, it's talking about only parcels where there are at least three or more units that are allowed on that parcel under the new zoning that you're developing. Because the way your zoning is written is sort of tuned well to that. In other words, you're also defining multifamily and only allowing multifamily at that three units or above. So it all kind of syncs up, but I do just want to flag that for awareness that that's, that's kind of the data source for this. So things that are single unit and two unit parcels would not be represented in that number, that new zoned unit capacity. So that's our first step. New zoned unit capacity, take that number. And then we're going to subtract for each of those, the existing built units on each of those parcels. And that's something that we're getting from your Town of Milton parcel data. So that's as accurate as it can be. That'll be much better than the state data that we were kind of starting from before for estimating this. So we have that kind of ready to go in the background. So we'll take that new zoned unit capacity, compare it to the existing built units on each of those parcels. And then we'll get a number that's net new allowable units. And in some cases, if, for instance, right now there are two units on a parcel and under our zoning, under this kind of new, the 3A zoning that we're evaluating together, you would not be able to build two units. You'd get a net new number that's negative for that one. So in those cases, if the net new is negative, we're going to zero it out. We're going to say there's no net new units, but we're also not assuming that you're losing units because that's unrealistic, right? Nobody's going to tear down an existing built development if they can't build it again or something better than it. So that's like the first set of steps, which is really just about at each parcel, are we getting a positive net new or a negative net new? If it's negative, we zero it out. If it's positive, we add it up. And then our second step is to take all of those individual parcel calculations and spit out a total number of new units that could be built under the new zoning within each of those sub-districts that we're considering. So that's, I wanted to surface this to you and give you the opportunity to ask any clarifying questions you have on this method. And also a little bit as a way to make clear that, while it seems like quite a straightforward and simple thing, it is a little bit dependent on quite a few small details that matter a lot for the validity of the result. So it will take us a little time when we do run these numbers, but they'll get you something that's more accurate and reliable than what we were starting from the last time we spoke with you. So with that, I think I'll pause and see if there's any questions or comments or anything on this.
Anyone?
Yeah. So Zoe, I don't know if you heard me say at another meeting or if Tim shared with you that I did this type of analysis. I'm, I'm sure there's some mistakes in it, but I took the Elliott Street District from the Article One, as we called it, in December. And I took the spreadsheet from the town parcel data and I went through and categorized them as one, two, and three families. And then I calculated how many sustaining units were there and, and what the new potential was and came up with a, a net new number. So I think I, I'm planning to show that hopefully one of these days, if not tonight, to the board. And it, I'd be curious to see if that's what you're talking about because, you know, I have an understanding of how that worked and it was very informative. So.
Yeah, absolutely. That sounds like exactly the process that we're imagining going through. And, you know, assuming that we've made all the same assumptions, we'll get the same number. And then, you know, the difference is just if there's, you know, adjustments that you all want to look at making, we'll be able to kind of iterate that on that a little bit with you to kind of update, okay, well, with these new adjustments, you know, how has that affected the net new result? So that, that's basically where we're expecting to do exactly what it sounds like you've done for the Elliott Street corridor under the parameters that we have at the end of 2023. And then we'll look at adjustments or, as well as the other districts, to the extent that that's information that you want to make your decisions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Zoe. Uh, Tim, did you have anything, any questions also?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that update.
Great. And thank you so much for slapping me in at the start and I hope you have a productive rest of your evening.
Good. Thank you so much. Okay, great. So jumping back to the discussion of ADU, I had asked Tim to send around for those who are, who were not on the board. And we don't have to go into great detail tonight. I know, I don't know if anyone has signed up for the September 10th.
I did.
I, I plan to sign up and attend that. And Tim, I know you're signed up, but I think that'll be good to hear. The, really in looking, you know, in looking through some of this language, I think there's a lot of language that we can actually work from that, that is in here. Obviously, there's certain things that will be, that we will need to take out or eliminate, such as the owner occupancy.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, certain items that we would need to change. Other things I think prompted me to have questions when we go into that forum on what will be allowed, what, you know. We had in here, for example, a cap on the number of, of units. It's by right, but we limited that cap, you know. Certain, certain things that, you know, what can we do or what can't we do? Parking surrounding around, the way I, I sort of liked the way we had framed the parking language, that it's adequate parking. It wasn't putting a number on it, but with that, you know, we can go into detail. I just didn't know if members, I just wanted to call your attention to it. And then also our temporary apartment bylaw, which we currently have, because we want to be thinking about how we transition and how we allow those who are in a temporary apartment to apply for a by right ADU situation. So.
One thing I was thinking, given that this will go, is allowed to go through a site plan approval process similar to other Dover amendment uses, it makes me think that maybe we should focus on the site plan approval.
I was thinking that too.
Zoning first.
Yeah.
Because even if something came in, in right, when it's able to, if we're ready with site plan approval, at least it gets us the tools for approving it. And then, you know, the, I, I looked through again from, you know, the, the language from a couple of years ago. And I think there's things in there that we can't do based on this law. So it would be, that's why I signed up also for September 10th. I know Tim did. And, you know, if whoever can attend, we can, you know, share with the rest of the board. I think we'll have a pretty good idea what we can do. One thing that concerns me though is we have East Milton overlay zoning. We have MBTA communities. We're going to have site plan approval and possibly ADU. And if that's for spring, when, when that's, that's like enough, that's enough for a whole meeting just by itself.
I know.
And I, I'm wondering whether we should have conversations with the town administrator and the select board about a dedicated zoning town meeting. I mean, these are, these are huge, these are huge initiatives. And people have a hard time, especially members of a town meeting who have families, you know, to, to take two weeks, you know, in a row for a town meeting focused on finance when they were talking about an override, and then to, to work on these kinds of zoning initiatives. So.
So I agree, because I think we're going to need that site plan. We, we've talked about that and having that come online along with the other, the other items. And I don't know how other members feel. And Tim, do you have clarification that, that an ADU could be applied for prior to the regulations being finalized?
I don't have clarity on that.
Because that just doesn't seem to be, process wise, make any sense.
Yeah, I, I think, and, and I did, you know, we, we did have a meeting, myself, town council, the town administrator, and, and the building commissioner. It was really, I mean, everyone's takeaway from that was we're very much in wait and see mode in terms of, you know, if and when the state is going to kind of come out with a process for unveiling their, you know, proposed regulations. That'll be, you know, very illuminating for everyone. And, and frankly, I think there's, there's been not a lot of input from, from anyone in a, in a position to have authority on this about, you know, what town should be doing. So, you know, I, I, I think that, that APA session, you know, will be, will be good. You know, because, you know, folks are, are thinking very hard on this and, and we'll be able to share some of this, some best practices and, and some ideas for, for how other towns are going to be kind of moving forward. But, I mean, my, my, my take on this is, you know, the law, you know, the law says, you, you know, you've got to allow an ADU. It puts in some, some pretty minimal, you know, dimensional and kind of, you know, other standards. I, I, I think it would be hard to argue that, you know, on the 181st day, if we get an ADU application, that we would have any grounds to, to deny it. I definitely agree that there's a lot of work to do to kind of prepare for, for that day. I just, I don't know how, you know, whether or not regulations are in place because the, the, the legislation and, you know, if, if anyone has it up in front of them, I, I haven't, I haven't pulled it up yet tonight. You know, it allows the State Housing Agency to promulgate guidelines or regulations. I, I don't think that the language of the law requires those regulations to be in place. And so, you know, I, I, again, I think once the sort of the 180-day period of, is someone looking at the?
No. Do you want us to look it up?
No, 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 no. I just, I, I wondered if, if someone was.
I can try. While you're talking.
I have it. The Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities may issue guidelines or promulgate regulations to administer this paragraph.
Yeah. So we're all very familiar now with the distinction between may and shall.
Yes.
And so, you know, so, but, but again, I, I, you know, to, to, to be, to be charitable and, and, and I think, and I think realistic. I don't think the state's interested in 350 towns flailing about doing things that they have no idea what they're doing. So I, I do believe that, you know, there is some priority on, on, on getting this regulatory process moving. I just haven't really heard anything, you know, about it yet. So, so yeah, but I do think, you know, addressing this via site plan, you know, if, if that's the board, you know, i- it really is going to entail a very thoughtful discussion about what site plan review means for the Goddard School versus what site plan review means for, you know, a 900-foot addition on a single-family house. And so I think, you know, really thinking critically about what we want to get out of site plan review, you know, is, is, is going to be important. But I think, you know, we are allowed to, to review these under site plan review. I, I think, you know, the board would be within its rights to recommend that, you know, to town meeting as a zoning change. So I, I, I think that becomes, you know, at the very least, I don't want to say a fail-safe, but I think that seems like the, the top priority would be, you know, create a site plan approval process, even if you don't have specific ADU zoning, you've at least got those parameters that are in site plan review.
Great.
So my understanding about regulations is it really is a, a thorough process. You know, that it's open to the public. Regulations just don't happen. That it is, it takes quite a bit of time and you have to reach out to all the towns to allow for feedback and you have to, you know, do certain things in, you know, the Administrative Procedures Act. So I find it hard to believe that they're going to be able to do all of that in 180 days.
Well, the key is they don't have to, it sounds like.
It's like, it says or, but, yeah, may and or. I know, but I, I, I know we have to prepare for the worst, but I just, this is a lot. Like, again, I said it before, it's a lot. And, and it would have been nice if they gave us a little bit more guidance on it. And my other question is if we have certain setbacks already in place, do those same setbacks apply to ADUs? Is that something that we can continue?
That's the question I had. Is it considered an accessory structure like a garage is? Or is it, would it be subject to primary structure setbacks? Tim, do you know?
I, 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 this, this might be a building commissioner question. My take here is that it's called an accessory dwelling unit because it's accessory to the primary use. So it would be, you know, subject to the accessory, you know, structure setbacks.
So even if it's attached, even if it's within the primary?
When, when accessory use is attached to the main, then it's required to meet the main. So like if your garage is attached to your house, it has to follow the primary setback, not the accessory structure setback.
But if you're turning a garage into, that is, you know, and, and some of ours are grandfathered in where they're sitting right on the lot line, how is that?
And the question about grandfathering on a different use.
At that point, you have to go get a variance.
That's what I think that, that's my understanding, is that you would go through the Board of Appeals for that.
And also in the, the law, it's, and, and we don't know this. We won't know this, I think, until October. But it says about parking spaces, that no additional parking spaces shall be required for an accessory dwelling located not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, and bus station. So, you know, and again, this is an argument we don't have the answer to right now. But if we don't, if it's determined that we don't have those, then we, we'll then be able to require a parking spot.
I think we had language in our previous ADU that said it needs to be adequate for the occupants. Meaning you have to be able to park it on site and we're not telling them what number. And I don't know if this language, but in our, in the last ADU, it had to be adequate for the, for the occupants.
Yeah. And the discussion there was.
We don't allow street parking.
Exactly. That was the question. And if you're close to the T or a bus, you know, then someone could decide that they're not going to, you know, have parking. And that's, I mean, the property owner is still in control here, you know.
Says at least one parking space shall be assigned to the resident of the ADU. They're saying they get one.
And which one are you reading?
In the, in the, what we had the previous.
Section three.
And I like, and there was also a maximum, no more than five vehicles allowed.
Yeah, for both.
You want to be able to have that in screening and protecting that those, yeah. All right. Lots of questions.
The real, the question becomes if, you know, you're going to see in that health report, there is a statistic about what percentage of Miltonites don't have cars. It's higher than you might think, actually. But again, you're going to take away green space. And if somebody doesn't have a car, why do you pave it? It, it's a question, I mean, it's, I think it's something worth discuss, discussing in areas that are close to access to.
Right. That's why I think adequate, the term, that adequate for the occupant, you know, for the.
Because some of these places, you know, they don't have a lot of green space.
What happens if, when your tenant actually decides they want a car and they get one halfway through the lease period?
You could add it, I'm sure.
If you what?
I would imagine you could go to, and request to add the parking space, right? As long as you have all, meet the other requirements.
You have to make sure your tenant doesn't bring home a car. It's like, that sounds like a nightmare, but, yeah.
Yeah. And I concern, you know, what this is the impact on our, our building department, which is already overworked. So.
Well, they, there's, there's more pavement in properties than you would think. Paving entire backyards because you don't, and if it's, if it's not necessary, I think it's a shame to do.
What about those pervious, they're like two-by-two squares and you grow grass between them, but they have curbing, so a car can go over them. You guys ever use those? I love that stuff. You see for driveways and things. Like when your garage is behind your house.
Yeah, I've seen them.
Add that into the bylaw instead of either asphalt or gravel, do some kind of impervious, I'm sorry, pervious?
I, I'm not sure if we can mandate what the pavement is, but I suppose we could encourage it. I guess these are all questions that we'll have to raise.
Which we won't solve, but I'm glad everyone's looking over this and, you know, it'll prompt questions and whoever can go on September 10th.
It's Zoom, right?
On Zoom. And I think, Tim, was there one today? I think there was one this week.
Was it today? I think it might have been next week, actually.
I was going to do that one.
Is it next week? Because I, was it the 27th? Maybe it's the 27th.
The 27th.
It's the 27th? Okay.
Yeah.
Because I was going to try to do both because I thought there'll be different questions at different times, so. And do you know?
The 27th is, it's not allowed to, it's closed. The enrollment.
Yeah, they opened up the September 10th one because there was such great demand.
Got it, okay. All right, then we better get on this.
Just a random question, and maybe you don't know this, Cheryl, but when you just said that there are more people that don't have cars than we would think, is it broken down by age? Like, is, because I know I think.
It's households, it's not people, it says households. And I did a quick read and I think it said something, it was less than 20%, but more than, it was in the teens. So of households, so that's not people.
Yeah.
It's households. So that's, I think, probably more than most people would think.
It'd just be interesting to know, like, the age group, you know, my mother lived on her own in a household and she didn't have a car. So, and I know our population here in town of older people, I think it's over 25%.
I was going to say, does it include, like, Winter Valley and Woody House and Winter Valley?
Detail is not in what I read, but it could be in an appendix or it might be a question for them.
Curious to have that broken out, yeah.
But it might be in data that Tim has, too.
Okay, good. Yeah, that'll be interesting to read through.
The idea, too, is that older people could live in these is another thing to think about, the mandates for the parking. Because if they don't have a car, because they're at an age where they're not driving anymore, then why build more asphalt? So it is definitely.
Because the unit will turn over. You're not going to rent to that one aged tenant forever.
Well, it may not be a rental either, it might be for a family member, but.
If it's a family member, in-law or something.
So you're already accounting for the vehicles?
Yeah.
If they don't have a car, you know, so if you have a big enough driveway, you have three spots and you develop an ADU, but you know the person's not going to have a car, you just say, okay, this one's, now I have two spots for my primary and then I have one spot for the ADU and nothing gets built, but you designate the spot, right?
I mean, a lot of properties have garages at the rear with long driveways. And so I really don't see for many properties that it's adding it, but for the occasional property where you would be adding asphalt, then maybe you don't.
Good, all good questions. Okay, so anything else, Tim, that you wanted to add to this topic?
No, you know, if I hear anything, it'll be, you know, anything that happens at the state level, they will broadcast kind of loud and clear to everyone through every means they can, so. Once I hear anything, if I do, you'll be the second to hear it. And again, yeah, hopefully, if you need the link to the registration for that event should be in your inbox. If folks need it, again, just shoot me a quick message and I'll get it to you. And yeah, stay tuned.
And if we're going to concentrate on the site plan approval, I know you had sent us out a few samples, I think, didn't you, at one point?
Yeah.
Like when we were, yeah.
I have a little folder of them, so.
So is there, in your opinion, is there one or two towns that really have stood out? Just to, if, just to save us some time, because if that is an important thing that we should be focusing on, maybe if we were able to look at the three best ones that you know of and highlight the why they're good?
Yeah, I'll have to give that a little bit of thought. You know, I hate to say this because, you know, we all have a lot of shared interests and challenges, but every town is different in their site plan approval, unfortunately. There really are no guardrails out there. But I'll take a look at some things where I think we can pull some some good stuff out of and we can kind of start the conversation that way.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I know, I do know Lexington was one, Tim, I believe that you had sent. I know we had talked about Brookline doing extensive work on theirs.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Brookline, Lexington, Newton, you know, all had elements that I think, you know, could be useful to us. And I think, you know, one thing that I think was specifically kind of interesting about, I forget which town did it, was there was, you know, explicit, separate kind of site plan approval requirements for Dover Amendment uses. You know, and it just would be helpful to kind of, you know, if that's something that we can zero in on, you know, in zoning, to use that as an example, could be interesting. But we'll give another look to that kind of batch and kind of see if there's some good stuff that we can pull from other towns.
I also still believe that the research I did and the work that I did for the MBTA communities for the site plan review piece, we should look at. I did look at a number of other communities and from my years on the board, knowing what would have been nice to have or would have been good to sort of have a, at least a discussion about. But if you don't have it in there, you kind of have less grounds to kind of push on it. So a lot of it has to do with the submission requirements and also peer review. I mean, I don't know about now on ADUs or small, but on the other projects, like having a developer pay for peer review is something we asked for, but we don't know, it's not mandated, it's not stated in there. And so, so I do think, I'd like to encourage everyone to look at that again.
And not to make you do more work, but I mean, I could do it. So if I went into that document and, because I haven't reviewed it, can I just cut and paste it into a new document as a standalone?
So if you, I can go back to the one that I shared back when, that it's, because what we, what went into Article 1 is a document, I think, that was a PDF in the end, but it was a Word document at one point. And I think probably Tim has that, too. In which case, yes, then you would, right?
And Tim, there was one that you sent out, and maybe I requested some materials, but it was a redlined version. Was that our site plan? I'll have to go back and look at that. Did you recall something being redlined?
Yeah, I'll take a look and see. We'll go back.
There was a lot of crossed out and I thought, was that ours? And some things have been taken out, but, all right, well, we can talk offline on that and maybe see. And I have a stack of.
Because if Cheryl has done the work, you know, for Milton.
There was a lot of really good things in there.
There was, and we shouldn't, like, start looking at other towns if Cheryl's already.
One thing I didn't do, which I think Tim highlighted, which I think would be good to do, is to separate out Dover Amendment from business, you know, from, because, you know, and even ADU is going to be much smaller, so the kinds of things, like, we're not going to require some of the same things that we were requiring for a bigger project, which was more the focus of the site plan. But, so we should look at it because it's very comprehensive. And in that case, we could say, we're going to, for ADUs, you don't need this. Or for, I do think businesses, some of them where it's very small, you know, maybe we don't need the same things as something large, but maybe we need different things.
And I think that's the way Lexington tiered it. I think it might have been Lexington that actually had it tiered, or Newton, but it was small, you know, small proposals versus larger.
Yeah, so.
Eight stone square footage of the project?
They just, they just called them small, moderate, and large. It was, but they did sort of have some categories of maybe square footage. I'll have to go back and look, too.
So one thing, too, when we think about these, like when Little Sprouts, I think it was, in Blue Hill Ave, they initially came in with a plan where the building was in one location and there was lots of discussion back and forth and that was going to take a variance. And so they said, okay, well, we're just going to have to put it where we don't need variances. And I put it really close to a house. And it's like, okay, is that benefit, was that the best outcome? Because of process, because of what's in the way the process works. So I'd like for us to think about that a little bit, too, because we don't want to, you know, sort of encourage designs that are less attractive or less impactful just because the process is easier, right?
Okay, good. Okay, so I think at this point, we can move on to, and if, Tim, you want to tee this up, discussion of fiscal year 2026 budget priorities? And then we can discuss.
Yeah, so the budget season's starting a little bit early this year. We usually don't have this conversation until the fall. But the town administrator did want to get a little bit of a jump, you know, override talk is in the air. And I think, you know, when that kind of thing happens, you know, they want to start getting, you know, a good feel for budget needs earlier rather than later. And so, you know, just like always, you know, Julia's salary comes out of the planning board budget that's set by contract. We have, you know, level service, you know, for, you know, office supplies, postage, advertising, training. You know, we sometimes kind of fiddle the dials on those based on previous years. You know, the big thing is obviously the sort of the plans and studies appropriation. You know, when we were doing MBTA communities, you know, last year and the year before, a lot of work, you know, was funded via grants. So we didn't spend as much of the planning board budget as we maybe ordinarily do. I think this fiscal year, you know, that'll be a change. You know, we're paying UTL partially out of the planning board budget. You know, we obviously have, you know, 11 more months in the fiscal year to kind of figure out plans, project studies, that the board may want to use some budgetary resources on. You know, that'll all go into the narrative that I put together about kind of, you know, that. The real, the main thing is, is, you know, whether the board is interested in a supplemental budget request. And this is something we did talk about last year. We did put in a supplemental budget request of $40,000 for the purpose of pursuing, you know, what we're calling Phase 2 of zoning recodification. You know, we did not get that supplemental budget request, that wasn't successful. You know, not that I think the board kind of pushed that project to the side, but the board's been very busy the past year. And so kind of that, that kind of, you know, Phase 2 of recodification, you know, hasn't had a lot of work done on it. You know, we can certainly give it another try. Or if there are other things that the board, you know, would be interested in kind of, you know, spending on above and beyond, you know, the usual kind of level service appropriation, that's the kind of thing that, you know, we would need to kind of figure out. And I don't think we need like a 100%, like, this is what we're going to do and this is the exact project and here's the budget. But I need to be able to kind of credibly say, you know, the board wants to do this. We need extra money to do it, you know, here's why it would be good. So, you know, easy thing would be, same thing we did last year, I can just copy and paste. I'm not necessarily interested in doing the easy thing, I want to do what you want to do. But, you know, this is the season and I think, you know, when we're talking about an override, you know, there is the potential for, you know, not, obviously, we're not talking about a spending spree. But this is something where we can start to think about, you know, is the sort of level service appropriation that we've been getting for the past six, seven, eight years, you know, sufficient for the board's needs, or do we want to kind of expand that pie a little bit? So, you know, I think I'm looking for kind of general ideas. I don't think the board needs to necessarily pin something down, you know, with exactitude. But again, just something that we can credibly say, you know, here is, you know, a supplemental budget request, you know, for this type of work. And then we can kind of talk eventually to the Warren Committee, you know, about that and then possibly town meeting.
So, Tim, do you think, like, what do you think you need? You know, it's hard for me to really know. But I just know, like, as an employer, I always say to my, the guys, what do you need to do your job better? Is there anything you need?
Maggie, I appreciate that. I do. But what I would say about that is actually, you know, we're not necessarily wanting for anything. You know, in terms of staff, we're good. This isn't a question of, you know, we need a, you know, assistant assistant town planner. What I think, I may be considering making my own supplemental budget request as a department head to my appointing authority. So, you know, I'm having that thought process right now. That would be kind of, because here's what I'll say. What would be, and I don't want to say will be helpful, but I think because the planning board budget is your budget, you know, it is subject to what you want to do. It's not my budget. I do, you know, buy, you know, banker's boxes sometimes without coming to ask you guys to do it. I hope that's okay, we need them. But on the big-ticket items, I'm not going spending the planning board's money without coming to the planning board, having a discussion in open session and kind of, you know, pursuing the planning board's priorities. And so I think, I do appreciate the thought and the question. I do think that you should be thinking about what do you need? Because if I consider my department's needs, you know, we are a lean operation. You know, we do, a big chunk of our work is staffing the planning board and then kind of managing the planning board's priorities. You know, one thing that I have found in my several years here is that, and I've come to the board in some of these cases, is a little bit of money as sort of, you know, seed money or matching funds for grants. Where, you know, I would never say, town meeting, give me 100,000 bucks so I can do my own plans and studies. But more along the lines of, you know, if Mass Trails requires a match, you know, being able to swiftly, swiftly and nimbly kind of move on that, you know, rather than, you know, to be able to make a decision as sort of a department head. Those are thought processes that I'm having. But I do think that you should think about, like, okay, in fiscal '26, you know, what do we think that we're going to be kind of needing sort of more money for our own kind of priorities for? So that was a long way of saying, don't worry about me, I got it covered. But I do appreciate the question.
Oh, I know, because it is, I know that, you know, it is a unique position you're in because you report to the selectmen and and that, but then you work alongside us. But, you know, of course, we need you, we would be lost, obviously, without you. So I don't, you know, honestly, I don't know what really we need. I mean, I would love a million dollars. I would love a million dollars to go out and buy a piece of property and do some affordable housing on it, but I don't think that's going to, we'll get that.
You have some suggestions that I haven't, just a thought of something we've talked about, too, that's.
Well, I do absolutely still believe that we should finish the work on the codification and to amend it such that it matches more typical zoning. In other words, you have more tables and you may even have diagrams that help explain things so it's more user-friendly. I really think it's super important. And, you know, one thing that, Tim, I don't know if it would be helpful to you jointly with us, but, you know, having a more searchable database for pass permits. So like if you, Maggie, wanted to look up what was done on that site plan approval on Little Sprouts, you could go online and you could find everything in one spot, you know, on that. So, you know, as, we don't have to kind of rely on people who've been here, you know, on the board for a long time or on staff for a long time. So I think it would be beneficial to the staff and to the committee. And then I, as our representative to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, you know, we haven't issued our report yet, but we're working on it. And it looks like we're likely to recommend some updates to it. So not a rewrite completely and not the whole level of process we went before. But, you know, some things are not covered very well at all, like sustainability. Or the affordable housing challenges, you know, need to be updated, and traffic situations. Which leads me to another, which is the MPIC requested some years ago, now before COVID, funding to have the traffic simulation model done, and it was done. But there's not, and now, like, if we wanted to use it, you know, it's got to, it comes out of an engineering budget or some other budget to actually use it. And you really want the idea. And you really want the idea to be able to use it. Like if you're going to change, like, you know, a small project by itself may not trigger a lot. But if you're having multiple projects, you know, like some people have asked like, well, what if we do have a lot of new development coming out of MBTA communities, right? What does that do to the traffic situation? Or even, how can we make any improvements? So anytime we think about zoning and planning, traffic comes up. So is there something where we can have some funds that would go towards?
Engineering.
Engineering, who manages or who has the contract with Beta on this, to say that, you know, we have a certain amount of money targeted towards that analysis? So.
Yeah, so incidentally, I do have a meeting with the, I was just gonna say, I do have a meeting with the engineering department and Beta tomorrow. And so I'll bring that up and, you know, if that's something that's useful.
So like a planning board or planning department allocation that goes towards us being able to have that independent look at traffic? Not just a peer review on large projects.
So would that come under planning board or does that go to the traffic committee?
Well, it's something we would want. Go ahead, Tim. Sorry.
Well, I was gonna say, there is, DPW did, this isn't at the pre, I don't know if it was last town meeting or the previous town meeting, because I know we spent some money. The DPW does now have a sort of, you know, specific line item for traffic engineering consulting, which I think would be, you know, maybe not the, but a place, you know, for, but I think Cheryl's point is well taken, that I think this has been kind of the drawback, because we have used the model, you know, in certain cases. But the drawback is it does cost money to run and run the reports. And, you know, where does that come from? And to be able to understand that on a consistent annual basis, I think would be helpful. So I'll bring that up with engineering and with Beta tomorrow just to kind of see, you know, what they think is the most appropriate, you know, thing and kind of pitch the idea of maybe planning board funding for that. Sorry to interrupt, Cheryl, I need one more item.
No, no, no problem.
Does that model allow you to see the effect of changing the direction of streets? And putting a no left turn?
It simulates where the traffic goes then.
That would be worth paying for.
Exactly, right. And the last thing was something I know, Tim, you mentioned several years ago. It's come up within the Ponzi initiative. And it caught my eye in the health report, which is a social justice communities. It's to do the, do more planning work in that part of Milton, what some call West Milton. But I'll just call it that area near Tucker. And, you know, to really do some work with that community. So some funding for that. So those are my suggestions.
And then I, Tim was kind enough to provide some of what other towns have done for a preservation plan. And the historical commission has really felt like that's been sort of, historic preservation has not been, because of funding, been high on the list in Milton. And we have, now we're doing the lockup. We're starting to do some work on some of our oldest structures. But having a preservation plan is part of the master plan. And there were some excellent preservation plans that were, that other towns have done. So we were going to try to find out what a consultant fee would cost to put that together, such as our, you know, we'll be wrapping up our open space and recreation plan. But then maybe we could go on and then initiate a preservation plan and a consultant. And a lot of the materials that were in those are surveys of historic properties, which we already have. Like we already have a lot of that material, which could go into some of those reports. But, you know, doing some additional.
So Meredith, with that, then it would help the CPC, right?
Exactly. That's what, then it gives guidance to, okay, this is what we should apply for. This has been part of a preservation plan, supported by the planning board, the historic commission and.
And this will be a joint effort between the two?
It could be. I mean, if we want, it could be anything we wanted. But I think having a plan in place would be helpful. And then we could collaborate, you know, I think together on the project, so. There's some great national consultants that have done work in a lot of New England towns that seem to be the go-to people. So maybe we could get some costs. I still have those, Tim. And maybe Cheyenne could do a little research to find out what other towns have paid to have those done.
Yeah, we'll definitely, yeah, we can definitely take a look at that. Cheyenne, please write that down.
We can get it in the queue, yeah, to start working. Great.
So one more thing.
So I will, so I'm looking at kind of my emails. The finance department does want, you know, budget templates back by the end of the month. That being said, I only got the budget template on the day of our last meeting. So this is the first time we've had a chance to talk about this. So I'm going to try to work on this, try to work on a narrative. Kind of, I want to submit something in a provisional form, just so that I'm being a good boy and handing in my homework on time. But I will talk to the town administrator, just let him know, like, you know, we toss a lot of ideas around, we want to make sure we get the numbers right. So we'll figure that out. But this may, we may need to have a follow-up conversation at the next meeting just to kind of finalize some of this stuff.
Sounds good. We can put that on the agenda again for next, okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Mine is more towards MBTA and UTIL. And when we're deciding districts and when we're deciding where to put units, I mean, I may have mentioned this before, it would be great to have UTIL actually in their room running the model. And like if I say, look, how many units can we get on 701 right off that? If they were here and they just hit the button and told us. Is that something, I mean, I know we have to eventually start paying these guys instead of, we're going to run out of grant money?
My sense is it's not as easy as that. It takes time. But, Tim, you've worked with them a lot more. What's your sense?
I think that there is a world in which that exercise, you know, can work. But I do think that it does require some initial kind of prep work in terms of, you know, here. So the thing about the model is there's two, there's two sets of inputs. And Meredith, maybe we can just start that agenda.
I'm approaching it more towards the budget, but I guess if I'm going.
We need money for it, as you're saying.
Well, I mean.
It's a short-term ask for this year, but I think it's important.
No, well, so the board has, so like I said, there's, there's in the realm of, I think, $20,000 of grant funds still kind of outstanding here. And then the entire, you know, $50,000 budget for fiscal '25 that the board has. I wouldn't be worried about paying UTIL. I think the board has plenty of money. I think the board will have money left over to do stuff. So I wouldn't be concerned about that. We're kind of focusing more on fiscal '26. So definitely appreciate your concern about their time and everything. But I do think the board still has, you know, plenty of money.
And, Tim, that would include doing a fiscal analysis that would allow for more than 10% affordability with MBTA communities? I think that was 20 grand that we had allocated last year for that? I'm not.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and double check what the figure that MAPP provided for us.
I think that was for more extensive, yeah, for more extensive.
I'll make a note to double check on that, double check on.
Just don't forget, we may be doing, I mean, we're entertaining three plans now, right? 25 for 10, 25%, 10%, and now the statute? I'm just concerned that we're going to run out of money.
Yeah, so the other thing is the Master Plan Implementation Committee did get 30,000 in this current fiscal year budget, which we wanted to do in case we wanted, we needed some for helping with the library. And if something else came up that those funds could be useful for. So it may be that some of those funds could be available, depending upon, you know, how things go. So I'm not going to commit the committee, you know, to that suggestion yet. But I just mentioned maybe.
Okay. So I think we can move into MBTA then, if everybody is ready. And so I was looking over our updated spreadsheet, which Julia printed out.
Meredith, can I just finish my point from earlier? I didn't want to.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Sorry.
Just to address Jim's question. The two inputs in the compliance model, the one that takes a ton of time and effort, well, not a ton, but time and effort, is the geography, right? Because it involves kind of grabbing parcels and inputting them. So that's something where you really do want to have a good idea what the geography is so that, you know, the consultants can kind of prep that and kind of get the model in a place where, you know, every iteration, we're talking about the same geography. The other inputs are, you know, the numbers, setbacks, height, FAR, all of that. Those, you know, are just a matter of typing numbers into a cell. You know, that being said, you know, you do want to make sure that you have a model spreadsheet that is kind of ready to go. And, you know, you're only working on kind of discrete, you know, factors at a time instead of, you know, kind of changing everything, you know, wholesale. So I think, you know, that could be an exercise in kind of fine tuning on the margins. I think the bulk of the exercise of iterating and kind of getting into a kind of good position, you know, I think the board really does, and because that's the stuff that's informed by values and priorities and less buying numbers. But I do think that, you know, if you get to a point where like you're fine tuning, you're trying to grab units here, grab units there, you know, there could be an exercise where, you know, we're kind of in a working session together with UTIL. So definitely possible, but I wouldn't have that be the first step because it would be time consuming and probably not very productive.
Yeah, because there was a gentleman who was on Raj or someone who did, who was manipulating in real time. But it was, we were to a point where we were asking specific questions. And I think, yeah, once we get further down the line. So we have gone through, we've ranked sort of all the districts that we had previously discussed. We had discussed going back and going over them to make sure that we were being consistent. I don't know if we would like to do that at this time or if you would like to go through the work that you did, because I think this might be a good time to do that, Cheryl.
Yeah, do you mind, I did look through it. I don't think, for me anyway, there were a lot of things that I think that we hadn't been consistent about. But there's a few, so if we, what do you think about taking like 15 minutes for those?
Right.
So the yellow, Tim, I may have highlighted. And I was looking at the line four. So A.2, allowed height is comparable to existing multifamily in parts of town excluding 40B projects. And on the Blue Hills Parkway, we gave it a five. And I'm wondering why we gave that a five? Because we're allowing two and a half stories here in the Parkway. And other comparable multifamily is higher than that. So does anybody remember why? Like we gave Elliot Street three and we gave East Milton three? And I'm wondering why we wouldn't have put a three on the Parkway?
Because, you know what I think we did? I think we took the existing multifamily, the two and three families that exist there. And we were saying that it.
There's still two and a half stories. This is height. This one's not size. Those, they might, they might be three, but they're certainly, so let me just say, for example, like.
Typically, they're lower.
The other multifamily in town is four to five stories. Right? And so I just feel like we're doing two and a half stories here. We're doing two and a half on Elliot and we're doing two and a half in East Milton. Seems like that should be a three. Tim, do you remember any reason why that would be a five rather than a three?
I don't remember any reason.
All right, so I'd like to suggest a three there for consistency.
And this is A.4?
This is on A.2.
Give me, give me half a minute. I gotta, I had to change my password when I logged in, so I'm just getting back into OneDrive.
All right. Sorry, I'm looking at a print version here.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could pull it up, Tim, on the screen too, just for those watching.
Right.
To be able to follow through. Yeah, thanks.
I know we gave Mattapan Station a three because there were some three, single families in that district and we were making that much higher. And I think Milton Station East, I don't recall. Also, that's circled for me too, like why did we do East? And maybe it had to do with the mix of scale of buildings in that district or in that area.
So what am I, what am I doing on Blue Hills Parkway?
Well, I'm kind of thinking Blue Hills Parkway on line four or principal A.2 to change the five to a three. And that would make it consistent with the other two and a half story districts of Elliot Street Corridor and East Milton. And then, and then go back to Milton Station East and ask why that's a three when we're making Milton Station East is, I don't, I'll print that. Do we have that at East at four, at six stories? I have to find my paperwork on that.
I think we were really focused on extra space storage.
But we have to think about the whole district. It's not just extra space, right?
Which would also be AD-8 wharf.
I'm trying to get to that.
AD-8 wharf would also be.
Yeah, so it's AD-8 wharf, which is six stories. So I'm thinking it should be a five is what I'm thinking instead of a three, because we're matching up with what's there. Oh, I know why. It was those small mill buildings, Meredith, I think that you picked up. What about making it a four? Because that's such a small part of it. That, my recollection now? Okay. A four, good. Okay.
I agree.
So you want to do a four on A.2?
Eastern East. Yeah. Then the next line down, A.3, allowed building size is comparable to existing. And we have under Granite Ave South and NA. But there are buildings there. So I thought we should give this a numerical value of some sort. Where.
A.3?
A.3.
I must have an old sheet. I'm not seeing any.
Line five.
Oh, there you go, way out there.
Line five, yeah, sorry. And column K. So I don't think it needs to be a high number here, but it needs to be a number.
Like a two?
A two. This is good with me. Yeah. All right, next line down. So line six, A.4. Allowed building size is comparable to multifamily in parts of town excluding 40Bs. And we have it only as a three in Milton Station East. And again, seems to me, yeah, other parts of town aren't six-story. But it seems like that could be a four instead of a three. Okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then keep on that same, same line going over to Granite Ave North, which is column J. We have an NA there. And I don't think that's all right. So the building size here is also allowed to be six-story. So I think that should be a four because we're allowing six stories in other parts of town.
I'd call it a five. It's the only building there, right?
Okay, if you want to call it a five, I'm okay with that too. And I was going to suggest a five for Granite Ave South. At four and a half stories, we have lots of four and a half for our multifamilies.
We ran into a problem there with the neighborhood across the way, right?
Yeah, but we're, we're just comparing it to other parts of town now. We've covered the neighborhood in a different line. So I would give Granite Ave North and South a five.
Well, four and a half stories. Then. That's almost.
That's what we have at Milton Hill House. We have it 131 Elliot, 36 Central.
I know, but townwide, most of the town is like two stories.
I know, but we're only comparing it to multifamily in other parts of town. We're not comparing it to the bulk of the town in this particular line.
Are you suggesting a four?
I was, I suggested a four for North. Jim said a five. But on South, I suggested a five. Because North is a six-story allowed and South is four and a half story allowed. My recollection, let me see.
Yeah, I'll have to renege my five if we're looking townwide.
Yeah, well, it's, because we don't have, we don't have a lot of multifamily in town. So we're comparing it to where we do have it, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, I'd go four on North and three or four on South. That's just me.
Well, North is two Granite. That's, you know.
Well, North is two granite, that's, you know, so that's, I think, that's okay to be five.
So when I, I did this, this is from my presentation at town meeting. And I did this chart which compared, you know, North and South. And also Milton Station East and West. And so at, at four and a half stories, you've got 131 Elliot, Milton Station West, Granite Ave South. At six stories, you have eighty eight wharf, Milton Station East, Matapan Station and Granite Ave North. So we were, you know, we were kind of looking at the, there are certain areas that could go four and a half and certain that could go six. In comparison, so. We didn't go higher and, and, you know, one place isn't like six, I mean, seven or eight when we didn't have it, so. So Meredith, what did you suggest for North then?
I'm fine with a five for North.
Okay, and then on South, you guys want to go four instead of five?
So if you say four, then if you give it a, a ranking of four. You're saying that it's okay for it to be four stories.
Well, I'm saying, what we're saying is it's comparable. We're not making an assessment of whether it's a good idea or not. We're just saying it's comparable to multifamily in other parts of town. That's, these are meant to be objective that way. Just like if you, somebody might not like Milton Hill House being four and a half stories either because there's single families next to it. But it's, it's there, right? So, you know, we make a comparison that we have it someplace else that's next to single families.
Right, and we do have it in other areas. I think what this is, this is not meant to be, in my opinion, when we come out, however this comes out. Does it need to be, okay, we have to do four stories because?
Oh, yeah, exactly, yeah.
So we can still say East Milton is very different from the lower mills, you know, area and.
You can still like make a decision that we, we think things need to be adjusted. But what this is just, this particular criteria.
There are some, there's not, the problem is there's not a lot of multifamily housing in East Milton Square, so.
This was trying to get at the fact that like somebody made a suggestion, maybe you go eight or 10 stories on two granite. And we don't have that anywhere, so we would have that as a different number. But these heights are in town, so we would give it a certain number.
Other areas, but those other areas are more appropriate to have those heights.
So if you want to do five for North and four for South.
Yeah, I feel a little bit better with that.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that too.
Then the next one, eight point.
Did you get that?
Okay. The next line, there aren't too many of these, so I said 15 minutes. But there's these few where we didn't fill them in that I thought was important to discuss. Eight point five allowed building typology is comparable. So the typology here in North and South allows for, you know, different scale of buildings. And we really don't have the typology, so I just didn't think we should leave them blank. So a one for both of them.
Say one for both.
Yeah.
I mean, on, on North, I, I mean, Cheryl, we can talk about typology.
I know.
You know, it's, there's a tallish building there right now.
Right.
We're talking about tall, I mean, I, I wouldn't give it a one, two, three maybe?
I, yeah, I agree with you because you look at it, an office building is a different typology. However, it is a big building, you know, so I would give it, I'm okay with a three there.
But I think on South, I mean, definitely, I mean, there's stuff there, but I mean.
It's not like, yeah.
I think, I think a one is appropriate on that one.
So three and a one.
Three and a one.
Good, Tim, thanks.
Next line, eight, eight point six required open space is comparable to existing. We gave it a five on North, I think five on South too, because we have a lot of open space required. And actually, some time ago, I did check it and it's what's existing is 40%. And so this would, that's what we require, a five. All right, I think there's only one, maybe one or, or two other ones. So if you look at line 20, C point four, this is in the disincentive teardowns line or category. District has parcels and or buildings of adequate size to allow additional units without demolition. And we have a one for Granite Ave North. Now, there's a lot of parking required for office. You could actually add, if you were, somebody could do a mixed use in some idea and add a residential building here and have less parking. So I actually think a one is not right here. I think this should be like a three. You guys agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Then on, down to the. Line 52 under H encouraged mixed use, do not lose business use opportunity. We have a lot of NAs in here. So on, I thought we should just change those to numerical to be consistent.
Matapan Station.
Yeah, because we have some numbers thrown in and NAs. So mixed use required, I think we just give it a.
Where are we, where are we talking about? Oh, all the way down here.
Row 52.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. H1, actually, it looks like different numbering, so, because I got rid of some, sorry. So it's H1.
Fifty eight.
Yeah, H1.
Yep.
So I just think the NA should be zeros. Right, it's either five or zero. And the same thing, the next line down, NA should just be zeros. And then, does everyone agree with that? Okay, and then under I affordable housing potential, I point two, we have some NAs thrown in there.
Give me a sec.
Sorry, Tim? Yep.
So we put zeros in on H, on one and two, all the NAs.
Yes.
Across the board.
Okay.
Then on I point two, district includes existing affordable housing. We have NA. So otherwise, we have ones and numbers, so. Should this be zero or one instead of NA?
Well, zero would mean numerically nothing, right? So it won't affect when we tally the columns.
Yeah, so I guess there should be zeros, right?
Zeros for all the NAs.
So then the next. I point three and four, all those NAs would be zeros as well. Yep. And there's two more that are similar under J. The J point one and J point two, I think just turning the NAs into zeros. And that's all I have.
Yep, that's. If I clean that up, that's.
It's consistent, so if we, we can sort of come back to it now if we look at other districts. And I think feel like we've been consistent with it. I mean, I think everybody should take a look if you have. Time to look at consist, consistency, but. I looked at it today, this is what I picked up.
We do have at the bottom of.
I think we can tell.
E eight, we have ends.
Sorry, which one?
Very bottom under, oh, but do we, we sort of started parcel sizes?
Those are, we moved out the.
Those are off, okay.
We can tell you the columns without those.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we can all look over this again and just.
Yeah.
Check in on that. All right, so Cheryl.
Okay.
I've been carrying your presentation to every meeting. So I think it's time. Just so you know, I've been very faithful and.
Thank you. Tim, do you have it? Or slide deck?
I have it, it's in a, I'll have to dig it up.
I mean, if you want, like, if you give me screen share opportunity, I can share.
You, you can share, so.
Okay.
You should go ahead and feel free to do that. I gotta, I'm gonna, I gotta step away for a quick minute, I'll be right back.
Okay.
I think this will be perfect timing too.
Okay, so again, this is just the districts. This is purely thinking about what was in the end of the year, the 25% and kind of.
Where we left off.
Where we left off and kind of thinking about first the Elliot Street Corridor. And then maybe tinkering with it and then also some other potential districts. So the thing I think that people asked about a lot was how can the Elliot Street Corridor really be only? Plus 70 net new when the zone capacity was 480? And, you know, it had to do with what Zoe spoke about earlier, which was they were using residency. Instead of looking at a parcel by parcel. And so I actually did look this winter at a parcel by parcel, which, which did take a little bit of time. But I thought it was worthwhile. So I also categorized the parcels by size. Thinking if we want to tinker with it a little bit, we could think about it on a parcel size basis. So then I, I used the, the data and put in also which ones, how many were one families, two families and threes? Because that would give us a more accurate count of our existing. So you can see that there's 142 single families, 18 two families and zero, three families. In the parcel sizes of 7,500 and up. So remember, 7,500 was our minimum lot size that was allowed to be used for, this only was allowed to be used for. So the total number of existing units, but based on that is 178. With the zone capacity of 480, the net new is really 302 and not 70. So is that, everybody understands how, how I arrived at that? Yeah, it really would have been, right? But it did take some time to go through and do, so thanks. And I have a spreadsheet, you know, to, to back it up. But that's, that was a really enlightening, I think, to me and I hope to everyone else. And so then I said, well, one of the things that we, we heard a lot was that there was too much density in Granite Ave. And part of, you think about what's driving that density is the density, the lower density in the Elliot Street Corridor. And if we think about, well, if we just lowered the density on Granite Ave without changing anything else. Or we added another district, we wouldn't be meeting the, the density requirement of 15 units an acre because we're adding land area. So then I said, well, it's worth us looking at whether we can get a little more unit capacity in the Elliot Street Corridor. And, and how might that happen? You know, another way to do it is just swap out, you know, the Granite Ave for another location, whether it's Randolph Ave or something else. But everybody's going to have concerns about, you know, how many units are on one, one particular parcel or two parcels that are large, right? So this, it seemed worthwhile. All of this obviously is going to take community process to run through, but this is just analysis. It's not necessarily a recommendation at this point. So. Well, I thought one thing to look at to do that would be to reduce the minimum lot size from 7,500 to 6,250. So if you did that.
Capturing more.
You gain 64 parcels, not changing your land area, but you're getting 64 more parcels, which is 40% increase in the number of parcels. And then another thing that you could look at, and they don't have to both be done, but.
You don't have to go in a wider area, which is what we ran into. We were having to take over more acreage to get the number of units to bring in, so.
So the other thing that you could look at is allowing more than three units on larger parcels. And you don't have to do both, you could do one or the other, but that was, those are the two things. The third thing is expand the district. I didn't look at that because it's harder, that requires the compliance model, which.
Yeah, and we didn't.
Which I, I don't, I didn't.
I think we didn't like that when we did that.
Yeah, originally, yeah, so. So you can see that in those 64 parcels, 50 of them are single family, 12 of them are two family. And two of them are three family. So it's kind of interesting that.
Capturing more two and three families.
Yeah. The other thing is it's interesting to me is that we have three families on 5,000 square foot parcels. And we have three families on parcels that are less than 5,000 square feet. And we're talking about, in this case, three units per parcel, right? So in this scenario, let me go now to the next. If you, so those additional parcels are in orange at the bottom. And you would pick up an additional zone capacity of 186 with a net new of 112. So that, everyone good with that so far? Okay. Then this one looks at, well, if you did 10,000 square feet and above, you could allow four units instead of three. And that would add zone capacity of 87 and all of that is net new. Then if you did a tiered. Where you allow four, five, six, seven, eight or nine units depending upon lot size. And you can see it here. And I'm going to show some examples that we have already which sort of match up with this. But if you did this, it would be 174 of zone, additional zone capacity. And all of that is net new. That's not on top of the one before it, obviously, because that's included in here. So you can, instead of thinking about how you might get five, six, four, five, six, seven, eight units. You don't have to think of it as one building. You can control the scale by requiring it be in multiple buildings is one way to look at. This is, this little diagram right here came from an architecture firm that was addressing what's called the missing middle. I think Tim talked about that in one of his early presentations. So you could control the size of these by capping the floor area ratio. And allowing on for four units, two, two unit buildings. Which is actually, if we look at it, I'm going to show you some examples, what we have is just that they're separate parcels. Was what we have in a lot of parts of this district. And then on five plus units, you could have a maximum of three units per building, which is what we would have under the current. And then you could say, okay, well, maybe by special permit, you could change that, so it could be one building. You know, so that, that would require, you know, a little different process. And I don't know if that's allowed, hopefully it would be. But it's, this is a way to get, you know, sort of infill of similar sized buildings. Rather than new buildings, new small apartment buildings that look out of character in the, in the neighborhood. Here's another example of diagrams of how that could work where it looks pretty similar facing the street. But you have a little bit more built up in, within the parcel itself. And if we went this direction, some use of funds that we could have is some kind of diagramming like this. So you're really starting to look at design and having some more design guidelines that can match up. So just to, to think about, well, do we have this already, these kinds of buildings already here? So this is a three unit example on Blue Hills Parkway, a three family on a 7,500 square foot parcel and 17 units an acre. So this is what we have, you know, what we had, you know, in our article one in the fall, right? We were allowing for this type of structure. Then if you look at, well, what do we have for four family? This is one on Clap Street on a just over 10,000 square foot parcel. And you can see it really is two parcels that are combined. So if a 10,000 square feet, and what I showed you earlier in the chart. If we did, allowed for four units on 10,000 square feet, this is an example of what that might be. There's another example of four units on Holborn Street. It's a little bit larger parcel at 12,000 and change. And you can see too, it's two parcels that were combined. And then you have this on Thatcher, which is detached units. But it can give you an idea of four units on 10,000 square feet, that's 16 units and, and acre. So within this requirement. So these are all different typologies on different shaped parcels, but we have them in town.
So this is for single families?
Yes, they're small. This is what they. This is what they are. And you can see there, you know, and two of them are less than 1,000 square feet and the other two are 1,100 and 1,200. They don't have frontage on the street because they were built in 1890. A lot of these were built before the zoning was passed. So we changed our zoning, so we can't build these things anymore. But we, we, we used to build some of these things this way, the way that this, we might do it under this MBTA zoning. So this is an example of what we have a lot of, are two families on 5,000 or plus, you know, a little bit more sized lots, which is really four units on 10,000 square feet, right? So that, again, back to that suggestion that over 10,000 square feet, we might change it to allow four units, is not atypical. Now, you know, these have, both have frontage on the street and whether a parcel will lend itself, you know, to adding another structure, you wouldn't be required to have frontage for both structures, you would just be required to have frontage for one. And then even on Blue Hills Parkway, where these are 5,000 square foot lots. And if you have three of these lined up together and let's say this was one parcel of 15,000 square feet, you've got six units. So why not have something which allows for six units on that sized parcel when we, we have examples of this in this, in this vicinity? We also have a single structure with five units on Griggs Lane, which you can see here. It's a larger site, it has a lot of ledge.
It's a very nice lot. There's nothing around it.
And you have seven units in this structure on Fairfax Road. This is just about 17,000 square foot parcel, so it's, comes out to 18 units an acre, but there's adequate parking and there's open space. And so you, these units, I haven't, I don't know the unit sizes, but I'm guessing they're not large, given that there's seven units in less than 6,500 square feet. But I, you know, this might be something that someone would choose to build, you know, under the zoning. And so it's not, and this fits right in with single families and two families in this neighborhood. I had to search it out because I saw it was, that we had that and I searched it out. So that's my analysis on, in the Elliott Street corridor. This now goes to some potential different locations. So before we do that, do, does anybody have questions you want to have some discussion about that Elliott Street corridor?
Did you look at going down to 5,500 square foot lots or 5,000 square foot lots?
No, because we heard from neighbors in those areas who felt like they wouldn't allow enough open space. And if you look at it, if you go back and you started looking at that, if you did, if you said, okay, you wanted to get, how many units did you want to get away from, let's say Granite Ave North, which had what, 530?
701, I think. Oh, between the two, it was 701, right?
Well, I'm just talking about, yeah, north, I think north is isolated enough that if you're thinking about, so if we kind of go back to, I think this one has the total numbers. If you, he said, okay, you know, how many, how much more might be reasonable to, to add to, I mean, if this was purely just take some off of Granite Ave and put some more in this Elliott Street or, and this could potentially be Blue Hills Parkway too. I didn't do Blue Hills Parkway, but I think it should be looked at. But it already has a different density allowed there and, and it's not driven by three units. So, you know, if you did, you know, you're, so now you're chipping away if you did some of this, right? You're chipping away at that 530. And so I don't think you...
And I think we can still look at how Elliott Street corridor is, how it's compromise, I mean...
The boundaries?
The boundaries, because I am thinking if we did this on like Cliff Road and, and...
And Maple Street.
There's a little bit more Maple. You know, the, in the Cliff neighborhood, off Elliott behind like Allen Circle, some of those, I think that area would risk demolition to try to get, because those are larger lots and to get the number of units that you would be able to get, you would be incentivized to tear down those properties. Where I think along some of Elliott Street and the Blue Hills corridor, you have really big property, like what you were showing, really big structures right now that could house it without being torn down, if that makes sense.
So one thing I think, you know, we could look at is if we said, yeah, we like some of this, we should actually look at the parcel, you know, look at the properties. And because we want, does it work on the ground? I mean, this is just a numbers thing, right? And before I, you, you probably all recall that I did some of that, looking at it on the ground to feel comfortable about 7,500 square feet. I feel like we would want to do the same at, with these adjustments. I think going to four is kind of like, to me, that's like, I don't think that that...
4,000 or four units?
Four units on these larger is not a, is not a big change. So if I would, if I'm looking at this, I would say, you know, maybe that 6,200, that 6,250 square feet on the parcel size might not be too bad. And, you know, going to four units, sorry, this one, you know, four units on these larger parcels that, you know, we can see that that's pretty consistent with a lot of what's there if you consider that there's 5,000 square feet with two. So we can't allow it, we can't allow a two unit, but by saying we can allow two, two units on a larger parcel, we're basically repeating what we have.
In some areas, I think that's a good point.
And so if you did 87, let's just say for example, plus 112, you're about 200. And so if you took 200, let's say off of Granite Ave South, then...
Makes a huge difference.
Makes a huge difference. And that's a sort of a reasonable thing to look at as an alternative to what we had before, in, in my opinion. Then the, the other way, if like, if we feel like maybe there's not support for that in the Elliott Street corridor, then we, I was thinking, you know, we look at another location, but I...
Before we do that, wouldn't it be better to build one structure like a four family instead of two, two families?
I just think scale wise...
You would achieve more open space. And if you capped it at two and a half stories?
Well, that's a possibility, I mean, these like...
But if it's an already existing structure, it might be really expensive to...
Yeah, if you already have a two family.
Well, you wouldn't tear it down, you would just add on to the back. One of the bad things to Elliott Street is that a lot of the houses are either on or within the setbacks. So if you tore them down, you'd have to recenter the property. So you wouldn't want to tear them down as a developer, you'd leave it where it is.
You're saying just add on to that, not...
Just add on to that.
I mean, I guess what you're saying is instead of making this requirement here, I guess it kind of depends, like, you know, some people get concerned about the scale of the buildings, a lot of people, that's the biggest thing we heard was that scale of buildings. So what I wanted to suggest is we don't, one way to address that is to say, you have a two family, you can build another two family. Because we, that's one of the things I really wish we could have done under the guidelines is to say you have a single, you can build a two unit somewhere. But the way it's structured, you have to have a three unit building, otherwise it's not considered multifamily. But my understanding is that two, two unit buildings on a parcel is considered multifamily. And so the other thing it does is you don't have to worry about bringing the other, the old building up to code. I mean, the new energy code is, if you connect them and even for fire ratings, it's just, in my opinion, as a, as an architect, you know, it's just clean to do the new one. But, you know, this is...
Yeah, I think you'd achieve more open space if you did one larger one. Open space is really the drive.
Potentially. But you're still going to have to have 40% open space. I mean, this doesn't change the open space requirement. I mean, maybe it's not, maybe we look at 40%, but 40% seemed to be a good number because it was pretty consistent with that neighborhood.
40% open space and then a driveway to get back there, you're not going to have the space.
What we're trying to do, remember, is to take advantage of the, of the lots that are larger. We kind of tailored the zoning on that 7,500 square feet. And if you look at it, there's 65 lots that are 7,500 to 10,000 of 142. So we're kind of giving up a lot of land in the rest of those lots by, by limiting it to three.
That's what makes it so nice is that you have that open space on those, a lot of space. I mean, what we're not looking at is, is the new ADU by law now, right? So now all of a sudden, we cap it at 6,250, but then it doesn't matter because the guy next door has 5,000 square feet, he can do a two family or a three family, or even more if he goes to get a special permit. So all this limitation of we got to stop at 6,200 is going to get blown out of the water when the ADU by law hits, which is really, which is why we should go down to 5,000 or 5,500, because it's going to come anyway. And it's going to be by right.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not, here where you can't limit it to a size of 900 square feet per unit. Like that's, that's going to, that has a different ownership allowed, has a different size requirement. I mean, I don't...
So if you're building these, then the ultimate affordability would be to build a 900 square foot unit and rent it out, cheaper.
It depends. Like if you can't, the, I mean, if you're a property owner, you're going to have the ADU option. The question is, is that more attractive than, than the MBTA communities? I can't answer without really thinking about it further. I'm just trying to sort of think through how we can meet the MBTA communities and not having to layer through the ADU part.
Well, you have to think of them in conjunction because it's a numbers game. If we zone for MBTA and then in six months, we have the ADU by law...
They're, they're both laws that the state is, you know, requiring. So at, at some level, we're going to have MBTA communities that we have to do, what level is unknown yet. And we're going to, we have to do this MB, ADU, or I mean, as and as of right, you know, use, whether we zone for it or not. So what I'm trying to do is say, if we're required to do the rapid transit 25%, how can we make an adjustment from what we had before that addresses some of the concerns? I think if we try and throw ADU into it, it's just going to confuse it.
Well, I'm, I, I don't think so at all. I think if you have a parcel that's smaller than what we're limiting this to, and then it gets developed, we're missing units.
But if you have a single that adds an ADU, that's not a multifamily.
If you have a two family, it adds ADU, it is.
How, how many of those? We have eight of them in this.
At that certain parcel size. How many do you have at 5,000 square feet?
It could become a two family.
A two can go to three. Any residential, any residential zone parcel gets to add a unit. It's not a residential, a single family. So if you have a two family, boom, it's a three. If it's a three, it's a four. So we're, once again, we're crazy not to take advantage of that.
They could tear down.
It's by right, they can do whatever they want.
So I, I, I think it might be, and, and maybe everyone can make a note and I'll do the same when we have, when we, we go to this ADU kind of session. It's an interesting question if a, if a two family with an ADU is a multifamily building or not. I know, and, and it's kind of mind boggling to even ask the question, it's a, a building with three units in it, you know, but there are, you know, legal def, you know, distinctions between single family, multifamily, ADU, et cetera. So I, I, I think Jim is onto a really interesting line of inquiry here. I, I, I think we'll need to confirm, like, is a two family plus one ADU counted as a multifamily structure? I'll try to get some clarity on that, but that may be a kind of a philosophical question for a lot of people.
Well, here, if you look at this chart, in the, we have 12 parcels that are two families in this, in the 6,200 to 7,500. We have 19 parcels in the five to 6,200 and 11 in less than 5,000. So we're looking at, let's see, 42 parcels, plus the 18, so 60 parcels that are two families that could add one unit.
That's 60 units, that's a net new of 60.
So the, to Tim's point though, I think the question, we, we need to find out how, how that's going to be viewed.
Well, I couldn't see, yeah, that's speculation, that's true. I mean, I just imagine if I was a building inspector and somebody turned their two family into a three, but it didn't have to meet the three family code, it's a ridiculous liability. So what you don't have to have...
You still have to meet building codes, is that what you mean?
So with a three family, isn't it sprinkled buildings, fire rated walls, it's separate smokes, separate utilities?
Well, an accessory dwelling unit, no. Well, it'll be interesting to see what, like our, the current requirements are that the electric is not a separate electric because it can't be, you know, really basically sold off as a separate unit. It'll be interesting to see how that, all that gets viewed, like this, you're not required to bring, you're not allowed currently, like to bring in a separate, you know, water service.
You have to provide water by law as a landlord, I think.
Yeah, it's, it is interesting to see though, what the future is if you look at California. I think California is now looking at to see if they can sell the ADU separately. So I feel like we do have to look to see what the trend is because that could be coming this way, because that's what it seems like is happening.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing about that health report, I think it said the average value of a single family home in Milton's over $900,000. That I think there were over 1,200 homeless people in Milton. And, you know, and I think there were 14 children in the public schools who were homeless. You know, housing, you know, is, is, it's just, whether it's something that ends up being rented or sold, you know, all of these are just tools to try and get more housing to put, to meet the need that people have and try and bring the price down, the cost down. But...
Yeah, I got to say, I like where you're going with the 6,250, I just think it should be a little lower, that's all.
Yeah.
I mean, this is an excellent analysis.
So, I mean, we could, we could add a chart, you know, add to the chart, you know, to add what that, add to the chart to see what that would do.
And we can play around, yeah, we can play around with this.
It was done at one point. I mean, I printed it off and put it somewhere, but I think it was...
Yeah, I think the question just became whether you can meet the open space requirements, et cetera.
We can change that, right?
Well, whether it's desirable to change it or not. I mean, there, there are 400 and some single family homes here where people were, you know, we heard from people who were concerned about not having it all paved over and all built over, they wanted...
And our greenhouse gases are up in Milton, Jim.
I'm sure they are.
All right, so, I mean, I think this, we should have some discussion.
Sorry.
We need trees.
Talking to the wrong guy. Where is it?
I know, this is a great exercise. But you're right, we could almost, yeah, take a look at the Blue Hills Parkway too.
And what I was, what I was thinking is, I mean, if, if you all think this is worth thinking about, then we could ask you to, to take a look at it as well, just to confirm.
The thing is, the, the buildings, the, the houses that you have chosen, they're pretty houses, so especially the one on, like, Blue Hill Parkway, to me, it's just so pretty. And to add one other unit, isn't that detrimental? You know, I lived right, you know, a couple houses down, they're so pretty. But my fear, and I know we're doing this to disincentive, incentivize like tear downs. And I would hate to see, like, this works, putting an extra one or two units into some of these will work because they're pretty. If they do tear it down, the question is, does it work? Because the buildings are, they're not pretty.
Right, like across the street from these might be some singles that are like starter homes and you kind of hate to see those, right? So that's the, another level of on the ground analysis, you know, that I think we would want to do before we would say, yes, this is something to pursue.
So can I just interrupt one more time? September 7th planning board update, there was a 5,500 square foot analysis done, we were calling it the transit area triplex. And that got us to 440 net new in that. So it's really not that much more from the numbers that you're showing at 6,200.
Well, the, back to, let's see.
It was 302 plus 112, right?
So the Elliott Street corridor, the, the unit capacity was 480, but the, it was thought to be 70 for net new, but the reality is it's...
I'm sorry, I'm talking about at 6,250 square foot parcels.
The net new for the, for those?
Yeah, what was the net new there?
For 112.
What's the 302?
That's the, that's the actual net new rather than 70. The, the, in orange is the, just those parcels that between 6,205 and 7,500.
So it was a 302 plus 112 or just 112? Okay, so it's 100 and 414 versus 440? No, am I missing something? I'm sorry.
I don't have what in front of me, Jim, but this was net new?
Last column, right? Last column, net new at 5,500 square feet.
Yeah, 440 versus... Yeah, four forty versus year before, fourteen. So.
It doesn't hurt to go down, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I just don't know the boundaries of that. Um.
Okay.
I guess we could look at, yeah.
Yeah. That's all. I don't mean to go backwards anymore.
My feeling was that the Elliott Street corridor, um, generally, not everyone was supportive, obviously, because I'm sure you'd look and people voted, not everyone there voted, um, supportive of it. But we would need to go back out and, you know, I think do some community outreach on it. But to me, going to, um, this doesn't get you as many at eighty-seven, but in some ways going to allowing four units on the larger, people would still be able to see that they have the same open space and you can accommodate these on a larger parcel. Whether you want as far as that would be, you know, whether you did that, I don't know. And whether, you know, you combine it with that is another. Um, but, um.
And I almost wouldn't mind carving off, like, the twenty-five-thousand, twenty-thousand, seventeen-thousand. You're really not gaining that many units in that area. And that's where I'm afraid you would have the tear downs.
Yeah.
So maybe that, like, on the ground can, like, I'm just thinking about Norway Road. Like, huge, big lots, beautiful homes, and I could see, you know.
And FAR and those were, that was, they were big.
That's why we were scaling it. But I think if you'd even want four units there, like, you, you don't.
That would, yeah.
Go four on those because then you can add a three-family even at the back of a single.
Some of those aren't that big of houses, but, um, the lots are big, but the houses aren't necessarily, um, that large, but.
There's, um.
That would be an area where that would really change the character of the town, but we can.
Yeah, that's where I think that this one, which has, only goes to four units on all of those larger, is, um, you know, all new capacity of eighty-seven. And that's pretty, and then if you did, you know, we looked at maybe a little bit expanded boundary.
Right.
Uh, and then another is to look at the smaller ones, you know? Um, I don't think we could say today which one's the right way without looking a little more on the ground and each parcel by parcel. Uh, but can I go through?
This is good. Yeah, keep going.
Um, just to the other sites now? Or do we wanna have some discussion about what we do with this next? Um, we can have UTL start to look at it. We could ask UTL to think about the boundary. Um, and then whether I or you.
I think we should look at the boundaries. I, I don't think they would know intimately, like, as.
So you had ideas about the boundary, Meredith? Do you wanna think about that?
Yeah.
Maybe I can, like, look at these sixty-two fifty and five thousand square foot lots and get a little, like, Jim, when you said on the, going to five, like, if I look at the,
Yeah, I can tell you which roads I would take off.
These are five thousand square foot lots with two families on them. And right now, um, the open space in the back is like, um, you have fifty percent of the, of the property is open space and you're sharing a driveway. So where you get the third unit here without dropping below forty percent, um, with, so that's the concern because then it's a tear down. If you can't add it with, you know, onto the property, then somebody would, you know, do a tear down. And that's, that's why.
To disincentivize the tear down, you may have to change that forty percent. I know you don't wanna hear that, but.
Well, I, I don't think it's a good idea myself to change the forty percent. That's why I think going down to five thousand, is challenging and I don't think it's necessary. I think we can make it up, but. I mean, that's your suggestion and, you know, we should put it on the table?
If the lawsuit comes in and we have to do twenty-five percent, I think we have to go to five thousand. If the lawsuit comes in and we, we settle at ten percent, I think we're good. Um, but, you know.
The, I think that's, that's gonna be something that we should get public feedback on, you know, because before we heard a lot of people say that there should be some distribution across town. So, um, that's why this was really more just trying to tinker and not be like radically different because, you know, town meeting passed this before and, you know, tinkering with it would address concerns and not have a, a radical new approach.
And I think this is a means of taking a lot of units off the Granite Ave South.
Oh, yeah.
And looking at, this is one alternative, but there's multiple alternatives.
I get it. I totally get it.
So, um, well, maybe what we should do is run through and then we can talk about next steps.
Why don't you?
Yeah, I know everybody else had location ideas too. I just wanna run through the ones that I had thrown out or I wanted to throw out. So I just, um, there are the dots here. And, and obviously two of them are within the commuter rail and two aren't. So, um, this is the parcel that's a Copeland. I don't really like to necessarily, um, call it like the ownership, but it's what anybody knows it as. It's at the intersection of Randolph Ave and Hillside. It's, um, nine point seven seven acres. Um, so if you just were trying to swap out a parcel, the Granite Ave is mass DOT part of it only, not the Legion and not North, is nine acres. So, you know, by, just to sort of think about comparable lot land areas. Now, whether this got less units, just like we were just talking about, you know, I think, um, would make sense. But this is just taking the same, what we did at South and applied it to here. So I think this parcel is, uh, one to look at, whether it's at this density or not. And then this is, uh, because it's, um, you look at some of our criteria, it has a lot of building and, and pavement already. It has grass, but not a lot of tree cover. Um, and it's on a bus line on Randolph Ave, uh, the, the bus two forty to Ashmont.
That's an interesting one. We hadn't looked at.
No.
We hadn't discussed that one.
And it's again, one of those that, I mean, it's owned by a foundation that could very well never want to change, so it's.
Until their board changes.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just, I'm not looking at, I'm just, again, it's more.
It would be a shame to do anything on that field. It's so gorgeous when you're driving into town.
I, I was, I'm just like looking at land area and some of the other criteria. We can, we'd have to run through the, all of the, the selection criteria and it, you know, the numbers may not pan out for it. This is, um, where, um, you can see where it's captured up at Big Blue at the top, but down where I've got this sort of trapezoid highlighted is that, um, nursing home, which is five point seven six acres, um, to Granite Ave is three point six.
What nursing home? Twelve hundred Brush Hill Road?
Yeah, um, the one next to, um, Winter Valley, I mean, not Winter Valley.
It's Flurry Field.
I thought we were gonna look at the vacant parcel next door.
You talked about some of those other parcels around it, Jim, but if you just isolate just this parcel, it is the minimum parcel, sub-district. It's, it's over five acres. And so, uh, to me, um, you know, it has a, it's a one mile away from the commuter rail, so it's not, I mean, it's closer than some other parts of town. So that's one. And it's mostly built, right? Cause you're not talking about the field on the left. You're talking, it's called the Brush Hill Care Center. So it's, um, and then, uh, this is the one that's within the half mile of Fairmount Station. But it also is close to the paper mill site. So I was wondering whether there's a way to make that, uh, combined.
Right.
District. Um, I know it has to cross over public land, so I don't know, but, um.
When, you, you, you might remember when we were talking about, um, contiguity in the Granite Ave district. Our first attempt at contiguity was to sort of include the DCR-owned marshland, kind of that goes up against the, uh, the highway. And, and that was not deemed to be a, a valid means of attaining contiguity for the district. So I think, you know, we have precedent of, of them kind of saying like, look, this is undevelopable state land between two parts of your district. So, um, you know, think about the paper mill site, kinda like Granite Ave North.
I still, I do think it's a little different though, Tim, because you can't, this thing is locked between a train and a, and the river and, and then the town, and the DCR land. So there's, that means you can't include this in anything, which, um.
It's unfortunate.
Which is, yeah. It's like North, Granite Ave North is, I, I feel like they should have considered that a little differently too, but we were able to combine those two, uh, North and South. That's the only way we were able to pick up North.
I mean, we were able to do that.
That was a road, right?
The road.
Yeah, they, they kinda allowed us to stretch the definition of, you know, you could have either side of, you know, Beacon Street as the same district. They're separated by a right-of-way. You know, they considered the ninety-three interchange there to be a big right-of-way. Um, you know, this one is not just the train tracks, not just Truman Parkway, but also the DCR land. So, I mean, it's, we can ask, we can certainly ask. But I, I, I think just our, our, our very recent history with Granite Ave kinda tells me, um, I, I, it's not looking good for the paper mill site.
Well, if you continued some, a little further down Truman Highway and then you had a narrow slip that crossed over to this parcel, would that work? Um, because you have, that parcel needs access and it's, it's going to come from the Milton side. It's not gonna come across the river. So if that ever gets developed, it will come from Truman Highway, right?
Yes.
So why not have some, I, I know, I'm just, I'm just kinda trying to make, give us some argument. They may still say no.
The argument is if they want housing.
Exactly. We've already got this zone for multifamily and our.
Tim, that's part of my, you know, I've got a lot of problems, but this is part of my problem is there are, there are areas in town that make sense. Like from our own planning perspective. And it makes sense to, um, support the state's initiative to create more housing. So that's why it's a shame to me that they're not being a little bit more flexible.
I mean, I, 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 I think the counterargument is like, yeah, we're interested in building housing. Why would we try to rezone a parcel that already has zoning and hasn't been redeveloped in seventeen years?
Because I think we could put a higher level of density than.
It's as of right.
Plus values have come up in seventeen years to make this thing worth it.
As of right.
That's the real issue.
Don't we have a special permit process on the existing zoning? So it would be as of right under this. You're right, Maggie.
I mean, what's the value of the as of right process versus the, I mean, is it, is it, I mean, the, and I.
It's very valuable.
And I've, I've, I've had conversations with folks that have been interested in purchasing this parcel. Um, you know, conversations that have gone, you know, to the DCR and MBTA level. And the, the, the problem that this parcel always encounters is MBTA is not going to accede to a acreade crossing of the Fairmount line tracks. And so your access to that site is a single lane va, under the viaduct that just does not work for access for ninety units.
Well, how about coming across the river? That's how they came before?
Well, how about coming out of, over Wetlands on Randolph Ave, ninety units? And there's no light on, on Randolph Ave for those ninety units.
I, I, and, and, and I think if, if we can, we can, like, like I said, we can certainly ask HLC if, if, if we can make a contiguity argument here. Um, you know, it's, it's definitely something worth asking. I just, th, this is not a basket I would put a lot of eggs in.
Maybe UTL could sort of look at this.
Yeah, and I don't know that.
In a way that might help us.
The density level here that you would have to do on the single families, it just may not make any sense. But we, you know, just in the spirit of showing that we looked at things that people asked about because people did ask about this, you know, may, whether it's the state or whether it's the density, it just may not be suitable. At least we go through the exercise. And this one is near the Reedville Station. And within that, there's, just on the Woolcut Road, you know, there's, um, St. Pius and they have a vacant parcel and the church itself. And I did wonder about going down Big Blue and picking those up with this. I don't think I show a map. Oh, yes, I do, here. Because there's some larger parcels and if, if that ever did sell, then we would have something in place for it. Um, because as we know, the rectory there sold and that ended up being developed into those townhouses. Uh, and, Tim, do you know what that was on a density level? The, um, Woodmere? Yeah.
I can do some quick math.
Okay, cause maybe we picked that up in the district if it's, if it's at the right density level, uh, cause it's right there. But again, this would take a little study, but, um.
That's an interesting site, Tim.
Yeah, I, I, I think maybe this might.
That's half mile of the subway, or the commuter rail.
Commuter rail.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit more obviously to the rectory, I mean, to the church.
It fits the statute.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least it makes sense.
So, I think that's it for me, yes.
That's great. Um.
I can stop.
We'd also, we talked a little bit about the Randolph Ave, um, forty B.
Seven oh one, yeah, totally.
Which.
Tim, you had one very early on that picked up that, right? That I don't think UTL ever studied, that, on Randolph Ave.
We looked at seven twenty-eight and the, um, Horse Farm as a kind of combined parcel. Uh, UTL did do a, a little bit of analysis on that.
Yeah, this is across the street, the one that's underway, you know, under construction right now. I think it's seven oh one?
Seven eleven.
Seven eleven, I'm sorry, seven eleven.
Seven acres.
That's seven acres.
Perfect. Overlay zone it, done. Right, just give it a good look at it. It's a no-brainer.
One that we should, uh, we should ask UTL to look at that, seven eleven.
Then we should look at six forty-eight Canton Ave also. That's like five point two three or something.
That's one that I think potentially might go away. If anyone goes away and doesn't get built, I think that has some potential. There's, um, land core issues with access, driveway access on there. So.
Interesting.
It's also, it would be subject to Wetlands regs, you know, so, I mean, while you could, which the forty B's not really.
So what would happen if we overlay zone it and then it gets thrown out and it's unbuildable? That's actually perfect. That adds to our numbers and then nothing gets built.
Well, not necessarily sell and somebody builds under the zoning.
Right.
Builds under the zone, yeah.
Instead of the forty B. Yeah, sorry, I missed out the shirt cause I can't really see Randolph Ave.
So next steps, I think we're, we're asking UTL to look at the, um, paper mill creatively, if there's any way that we could, they could help us advocate for.
So the, the thing is, is what density level would we want them looking at? So I guess, you know, one thing, if we think about like the ones near the commuter rail station, do we ask them to look at fifteen units an acre? So this might be gearing more towards the ten percent or towards the whatever third option is. And maybe we look at a, the nursing home and the Copeland as replacements for Granite Ave South. So like if I'm thinking about what my options are for addressing the twenty-five percent, it's finding alternative to Granite Ave South and having a rebalance a little bit. That's it, that's it. Then I go on to, I'm looking at the commuter rail stations and, and I think then we look at Elliott with respect to the, um, the Blue Hill Ave Station, right? So I'm.
I think seven eleven, definitely, we should.
Yeah, yeah, as an, also as an alternative.
As an alternative also.
Yes, that, I agree.
I just, I'm not a huge fan for, um, the Copelands. I think I've said it before. I don't think they're interested in it. They've done so much for our town.
Makes me nervous.
That, that I, I, um.
So I think we, we can rate it and we can have reasons for not wanting it, just like we have reasons for not wanting something else. But I don't, I feel like, I feel like.
It's just a shame to see that develop.
We shouldn't be, we shouldn't take things off the table that could work and, and we run it through the process and it might not be our recommendation. But then if people ask us, did you look at this? Did you look at that? Did you look at this?
Say, we've looked at everything.
You know, like the Thomas Nursery property, you know, was another one, Thomas Nursery. You know, um, and again, I know that you, you said that's a terrible site for, for various reasons, but again, if we're looking at what's a large parcel, it should be run through. So, um.
And I believe we looked at Winter Valley, but that, because. And I believe we looked at Winter Valley, but that, because the acreage was so large, it dragged our numbers down significantly. So just, that was one that we didn't look at.
What about Quistah Brook?
Same, the same thing there.
I think what Tim said the same thing.
Yeah, you need to have significant number of units on Winter Valley, Quistah Brook in order to hit the density that we need.
Yeah, I still go back to, I do think, you know, this zoning is still good. I mean, the statute is still a good statute. And I think that we, I think I've said it before, we should give some of our residents the opportunity to take advantage of it. And I think going up Blue Hill Ave, you know, by the, by 7 Brushhill Road, but going up that and giving all those current residents an opportunity to put a, to convert their single or two-family to a three-family. I think that's a positive thing and it's within a half a mile of the Blue Hill Ave commuter. So I wouldn't even mind looking further up. And I think UTL might have looked at it and I don't even know why we...
Yeah, so I think, Tim, if, to Maggie's point, the half-mile, if we could look at the Blue Hill Ave District with respect to the half-mile of the Blue Hill Ave commuter rail instead of just this piece that we have right now. I mean, we may find that, I know that we looked at a larger area there before and we peeled it back, but is it worth? Well, we should definitely look at it as it relates to the commuter rail.
And the Amor Road, that's 16 units per acre, that 40B there. So I don't know if that stretch we could incorporate and take advantage of that.
Not a well-loved density there, but that's where I do think it's challenging to add even that Blue Hills Parkway area more to the density levels that we have in the Elliott Street corridor because they're not getting us to 15 units an acre. And we don't, we, you know, 15 units an acre is Amor and it is Brushhill Road, 40B. And those aren't something people really like in their neighborhoods. So it's, that's why these larger parcels that are on roadways like Randolph Ave or Granite Ave, you know, make sense to be a balance, you know, to help balance it out in my mind.
What about the parcel on Brushhill Road that's adjacent to 1200 Brushhill Road? Remember, we talked about that and Tim was going to look into it. Tim, did you ever look into that one?
On the corner of the Ballfields?
No, not the Fields and not 1200, but...
Which one's 1200?
There's a parcel that's owned by Fuller Village. That's contiguous, I mean...
Oh, right, there's two parcels.
Yeah. We talk about this every time I bring it up and then nothing ever happens.
I mean, what do we want to look at there? I mean, I think it's wet.
The development potential, is it over five acres? And what can we do with it? I mean, it's...
But it's combined with Fuller.
It's a separate parcel, though.
Separate, separate parcels.
But it's under our same ownership, right?
So what?
I don't see what advantage that has with, over just using the nursing home property, which is clean.
Nursing home property is going to be too many units. That's a big building.
Not if we do some balancing out.
I would think, though, that we just went through the memory care and we talked about the need.
That's a good point, too.
How there's such a need for nursing homes and memory care. My fear is if we did that at 1200, the owners of the memory, of the facility, they're going to flip it and become housing.
So that's another thing that we put over on our evaluation is that...
Tear down.
You know, if that's a tear-down possibility, then we put that, again...
And not just a tear-down, but it would be a change of, a change of use. I mean, the building is a very pretty, pretty building.
It could be converted.
Yeah.
But what if the nursing home doesn't do well there and they need an alternative use? Converting it to housing would be ideal for them. I mean, it...
I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying, what about the other parcel that's near it? That's all. I mean, I'm not...
That other parcel isn't another parcel, apparently. That's connected to the Blue Hill Ave part of Fuller Village.
By a string.
Yeah, so they can use it there as one...
Part of their land.
It's, yes, yeah, but not across...
Could they spin it off? I mean, could they sell it?
Probably would throw them out of compliance with their zoning at that point if they're using as part of their units per acre calculation.
You can't tell if that little triangular-shaped parcel is more than five acres, can you, Tim?
Yeah, that's more than five.
I think it is because that whole thing is like 29, just the Caroline Drive area.
I wish I could do this.
I know.
Look at this guy, right? I thought the frozen cells was good.
Yeah.
Great tool.
Yeah, seven, seven and a quarter.
Personally, I would look at that, see what the potential is there.
Tim's been talking about that for a while. We gotta...
He wants to build on it.
We gotta like shut him off.
Yeah, I know, the only way to, I know, right?
In the spirit of looking at all the options.
Right.
Well, I think the problem with this is that you can't test it without bringing in the acreage of the main parcel. If this is a single parcel, the compliance model is going to treat it as a single parcel. And so you're getting all of the units from the bigger portion of it.
I know, that was the part we didn't understand because it's not a single parcel. It's actually two different parcels. The hang-up was it was under the same ownership. And to me, that just didn't make sense because you should, if it's a single standalone parcel, you can do whatever it is you want with it.
But I guess what I'm saying is like, it's not, it's not being treated as a single parcel. And so it won't be treated as a single parcel in the model. And so anything that you, anything that you do on this is going to include, include over here. As a practical matter, you know, zoning, existing zoning, existing permitting notwithstanding, yeah, you could spin that off and do whatever you wanted with it. But in order to test it, I don't think we have a means to test it in the compliance model unless we went and...
I was going to say, can you do it in the residence, did the city's model?
Yeah, just do it by hand or something. And I don't know what that means, but it's a shame not to use it because our model doesn't recognize it.
Yeah.
It just seems like a great opportunity.
That's where the limitations of the model.
Well, I mean, and it's also kind of a, the philosophy of the model is you're dealing with the parcels that you have, not the parcels that you wish you had. So like to use, to use this would assume, you know, a sort of an action by Fuller Village that, you know, they may or may not take.
Well, who's this owner?
Isn't...
It doesn't say Fuller Village.
That's because he's got it pointing to a different property.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, sorry.
You just made Stephen Campbell a right... The guy's like, really?
Do they have any thoughts on how we could utilize that parcel?
There's got to be a way.
Can you get around, you know?
So...
The model.
So in having them look at parcels, a part of it is going to be, what do we want to accomplish on the parcel, right?
Right.
So do...
I would say 20 units per acre on some of the ones that we've been discussing. Go above...
So, Tim, can you, actually, maybe, how about, how about we do this? If we, if they did confirm some of what I did and then said, okay, that means the density level that you're looking at now on a parcel like Granite Ave South is X, then we could start applying that to these other parcels because then we know that it's, we're going to be in the range of the 15 units an acre. Because once we start adding land areas that's different size, you know, do you understand what I'm saying, Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. So the changes to Elliott Street lead and then...
And then that means you can take some unit capacity away from a larger parcel. Let's say it's Granite Ave South. Or you could then take that reduced capacity parcel and of about the same size somewhere else, right? So instead of Granite Ave South, it's maybe on Randolph Ave or maybe it's this Brushhill Road site.
And maybe 90 units on each side, you know, would eventually...
Truman Parkway?
Truman Parkway.
Just kind of, but it depends how much land area is added that would still keep us in the 15 units an acre. So they would have to look at, okay, maybe you have to go down to 6250. Maybe you have to go to the four units. Maybe you even have to go more, you know, or may, or that won't work at all. Or here's what, if you did these two, these things and you added and you use these parcels, here's what, how many units you would have to have on Granite Ave South or Randolph Ave or Brushhill Road.
Yeah, wouldn't it be easier for them to start with the bigger, the bigger parcels and see what we came up with? So like start at Truman Parkway, you know?
But you need to know what your goal is, right? So if your goal is to, we don't know what the zone capacity...
To put as many units as we can without negatively impacting the neighborhood.
Yeah, so what do we decide that is?
I think from the, from the perspective of the constraints of both the guidelines and the model, like, I think that, you know, figuring out, because Elliott Street checks a lot of boxes for you in terms of contiguity, in terms of transit proximity, in terms of all of that. So, you know, we're talking about turning up the dial a little bit on Elliott Street to, you know, what, you obviously have to talk to folks and open it up and figure out what a tolerable level is. But that as sort of the first step, because you have to, you have to think, you know, what are we solving for? And ultimately, and I don't want to speak for, you know, the majority of Miltonians, but I think we're solving for Granite Ave and East Milton, which, which I think are the districts that folks kind of agreed had too many units. And so it's not necessarily that we're, you know, I don't think anyone dying to put units on Truman Parkway or Randolph Ave or the Copeland property or anything. These are potential solutions to the problem of Granite Ave and East Milton. So I think figuring out Elliott Street first, what is the reduction we can do on the east side? And then what is the remainder that we have to make up with some of these other potential districts?
All right, so does that sound like a reasonable charge to UTL?
Yeah, I want to, I want to make sure like we're 100% clear on. So Cheryl, you've got your, and if you don't mind or if the board doesn't mind, if I paid very close attention to your presentation, Cheryl, but a follow-up conversation to, just to make sure I'm clear on what the, what the homework is, might be helpful.
And we could share this with UTL, obviously.
Yeah. No, for sure. And then, you know, so what are the other geographies that we want to look at? You know, assuming the step two is reduction on Granite Ave South and a reduction in East Milton or...
So...
711 Randolph Ave would be included.
711 Randolph.
And I'm still hung up on that little seven-acre parcel by Fuller Village if we can find a way to...
And then the ones that I, the ones that I ran through, do you agree that we should just take a look at?
1200 Brushhill Road, we should take a look at.
All right, so you'll get those, you have this presentation, Tim, so if you can get those locations from it.
I'd use Copeland as a last, last resort personally.
Again, I'm not...
I get it, I get it, I'm just saying.
We just have to say that we looked at all the sites that have been thrown out and that are of large enough size.
And if we are able to make up enough, I think, I do have concerns about losing commercial in East Milton Square. There's definitely some parcels I'd like to carve out and we could talk about. But maybe we don't even need it. But we also said we're doing overlay zoning, so we'd like to get credit, too.
I want to get credit for what we're allowing there and I don't think we need anything more, but I'd like to get the credit.
Reduce just the boundaries a little bit.
Should we look at 648 even though we're saying it might not work? Just in the spirit of looking at everything and including everything?
I think let's start with the other 40B, the 711. And see what we get in that.
711's a no-brainer, yeah, we're gonna, I mean, that's gonna...
Because I, there are some issues with land court on 648.
And then I think, maybe UTL could look a little and think a little bit about the Blue Hill Ave and Elliott Street where they come together because that's within the half-mile of commuter rail.
And like the Milton Food Mart, you know, the Knights of Columbus, like that's...
Because that got excluded before and those...
Yes, and that is...
Those are here in this, but they're too small to qualify.
They're in desperate need of revitalization.
So maybe you lower the square footage on the parcel size there.
Yeah, like I said, I thought, I didn't do the Parkway yet. I started, I have the spreadsheet, the spreadsheet of each of the parcels. There's three churches in that district and there's a Kidder. So I think we need to be thoughtful about it. But it's, it's prime because you can get to the commuter rail.
And it needs it.
And the bike path.
We need it, that needs to be redeveloped.
It's a sad sight.
I, yeah, I don't know what the right numbers are there, but...
Are you saying would exclude the churches in Kidder?
No, I'm just pointing it out because if you, if you also look, I know we didn't want to, two, but within it here, St. Mary's is within this, too. And if we're excluding St. Mary's, but we're including three churches on the Parkway, I just think we need to be sensitive to those churches, too.
I agree.
So we...
You know, so...
I think we're going to have to look at these boundaries, too, once we get it.
That should be maybe just a five acre, like see what could be five acre.
Yeah, the Parkway, if we can make up some of those units. I mean, I do think it's nice if we could do like we're doing in the Elliott Street corridor there, but we're allowing more in the Parkway now. And if we can pick up those somewhere else and allow like the Elliott Street numbers to wrap, I think it, it may make more sense. But...
We may have to grow the district a little bit in Elliott Street.
Yeah. So, all right, are you all okay with Tim and I having a conversation about what we've discussed tonight?
I think that sounds great, a follow-up with this.
All right.
Sounds good, Tim?
Sounds real good.
Good.
That's 951.
It's 951. So I think, is there anything else you had, Tim, for this evening?
Nope.
To add or... Okay. Anyone else from the board, anything?
I just want to say thanks for, Tim, for coming out to our neighborhood in Cheyenne. Thank you for talking to the neighbors and helping us walk through that. So it'd be great if we could get put on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Always nice to get out of the office.
Have we talked to the neighbors? Do they know, like if they take down, they probably won't take down any more sections of that wall?
I haven't personally talked to them, no. And I do think it was just, there was no ill-intents and...
Oftentimes.
And, you know, what, they're doing a great job in this case, you know? The fear always is it's not going to look like you're hoping it's going to look like. So I think they're doing a great job personally. But it's just the process. You know, we're just confused by the process. I was confused by the process when someone came and asked me because I've been through, because my old house is across the street from it. And I, you know, I've done work on a wall when I lived over there. So I know that what the process was. So it just, when someone came to me, it just was different. So it's just trying to keep it the same.
Good. And thank you, Cheryl, for your work on this, for this presentation. This is...
You're welcome.
Very good. All right, then I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.